Good evening all. Welcome to the Lompoke City Council meeting. We're not going to drag out more chairs because we think there's a whole bunch of you who are here for something at the very beginning, so if you're standing in the back, I apologize. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lingle.
Chair.
Councilmember Costa.
Present.
Councilmember Martner.
Present.
Mayor Potem Starbuck. Mayor John Linn.
Here and let the record show that Dirk's out hunting. He's going to bring us all back something to eat. This evening, we have a change and a substitution for the invocation will be Bernie Fetterman. Bernie, and if you'd all please rise.
Dear God, my Lord, we pause to express gratitude during this month of Thanksgiving for all that you've done for us, for your faithfulness and our faith in you, our family, our friends, and this great community we're so fortunate to be a part of. We thank you for the freedoms we enjoy and those freedoms that we were able to express this day in the democratic process of our country. We do not take these freedoms nor the freedom to share our ideas and opinions for granted. We're grateful for those who have paid the ultimate price, our veterans, who put themselves in harm's way serving our country. And we come today for our mayor, the members of this city council, and we thank you for their willingness to serve. We thank you for their dedication in leading and governing us. We ask you, God, that you'll give them discernment, not just between what is right and what is wrong, but between what is good and what is great. We pray that you'll give them compassion to see beyond their normal boundaries. We pray that you'll give them wisdom that will take them far beyond their natural capabilities. We pray for their families, as many times it is the families that pay the price for someone in public service. We ask you to care for them. We are grateful, dear God, for the service of Cecilia Martner and her dedicated commitment to the city during her time as she served on city council. We pray for our city administrator, our police, our fire chiefs, all our department leaders, the employees of our city who do the necessary work for us. And tonight, as Ed Lardner has sworn in as captain, we are reminded of the great servants in our police and fire departments willing to protect us and keep us safe. Watch over them and give Captain Lardner success in his leadership. Use each of us to be a guide to someone who's lost their way, a source of light in darkness, a source of strength to the weak. Where there is bitterness and hatred, use us as agents of grace and kindness. Where there's crime and violence and vandalism, send righteousness that allow these things to be exposed for what they are and for who they are. In your gentleness, guide us. In your power, strengthen us. In your lowliness, strip us of our selfish pride. And in your greatness, lift us up that we might aspire to greater things. And while we pray for ourselves, we remember to pray for those on the East Coast devastated by a recent hurricane and the potential of more bad weather. Provide your grace and your peace to those who've lost loved ones. Strength to workers, service organizations, hospitals, chaplains, and first responders who continue to respond. And we pray for the issues on the agenda this night and the issues our leaders face. Be with us. Be our source of wisdom. We are grateful that you've heard my prayer and heard our prayers together, and for these things, we say amen.
Amen. And if you join me in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amid several proclamations since our last council meeting, one of them was here in this chamber, which was a proclamation with regard to Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It was a sad day because we've gone quite a few years without having a domestic violence death, and we had one in Lompoke and four in the county. Some people would say that random chance can come along, but maybe it's a call to all of us to be a little more alert and a little more attentive and look for opportunities to help people when they're in domestic crisis so that we can get ahead of it. Also have a proclamation for Lung Cancer Awareness Month, but I don't have it.
Yeah, they're here.
No, I don't have the proclamation. We're all looking around. You guys come on down.
If you have one, this one.
Yeah, this could be a little tougher.
We have one last year.
Come on over here. Yeah, we're all looking at each other going, where's the proclamation? So instead, we'll talk about it a bit.
Okay.
Because you guys are the inspiration for this proclamation, and we want to thank you for that. As you know, my father passed from lung cancer many years ago at a nice ripe old age, so you know, it's kind of okay then. But it affects so many people, and we want to thank you for all of your efforts going forward. And you know, that's another one of the things that makes this a wonderful place because people are here making things better. So I know you want to quote some statistics, so come on up. Come on, Mary Ann.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Mary Ann Rios, and I'm a retired high school counselor from Lompoke High School. I had to retire because of lung cancer, and many of you probably think that you get lung cancer from smoking, and you can get lung cancer just because you have lungs. There are children as young as 11 and young women that are healthy athletes aged 21 that could get lung cancer. My symptoms, I had six approximately. I had recurring cough, sinus infections, shoulder pain, fatigue, chest pain, and I was misdiagnosed by the doctors here in Lompoke that I only had allergies. By the time they found the tumor, I was stage 3B, but when they really found out when I had the three brain tumors, I was actually stage four. So we're having a vigil Thursday to educate everyone because everyone is at risk of getting lung cancer. And it's really important that you understand the symptoms so you can catch it early. Had I been educated like they educate people on breast cancer, colon cancer, pancreatic, prostate, I could be living. Today was a horrible day for me because I've been on a targeted treatment from UC Davis, and I found out today that the cancer is coming back after three months of having a little bit of happiness. My cancer is not only in my lungs, my lymph nodes, the three brain tumors, and in my bone and my spine. I know I look pretty good, but it is so important to support lung cancer and in the stigma. It doesn't require smoking. I want to introduce the other people that are here with me. Kathy Downey's my sister, and we work as Advocates for Lung Cancer Alliance. It's a national foundation in Washington DC, and they're trying to lower the death rate of lung cancer. Approximately 250,000 people will be diagnosed with lung cancer this year. 160,000 of those will die. 28,000 of those are never smokers. Approximately 200 women die each day from lung cancer. The other young lady I have with here is Haley Kennedy. She's doing her senior project at Cabrillo High School on lung cancer, and she has been a great asset in helping to spread the word. Lompoke High School has been aware of it, but now we're getting the message at Cabrillo. So if you ever hear somebody having lung cancer, please don't ask them if they smoked. We never ask anybody else if they have a cancer, if they smoked, or how did you get it. We just help support them. And I just want to read, this is really a cool bookmark we're going to give the board members. It says, "Remember those symptoms of lung cancer. You can have blood in your cough, recurring respiratory infections, enduring cough that is new or different, ache or pain in shoulder, back or chest, trouble breathing, hoarseness or wheezing, exhaustion or weakness. If you have any of these symptoms or troubling you, see your doctor." The only one I didn't have was blood in the cough, and that's usually if you're a smoker. That spells out breathe. I really encourage, if you can't make the vigil on Thursday night at the Elks Lodge, we're also having a walk, and that's with Free to Breathe Organization. And we are, even though we are the number one cancer killer, we are the least funded, and we need your help. And I really am thrilled that Mayor Lynn, this is the second year, he has proclaimed November Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you.
And now, before we have a badge pinning, I'd like all of our police explorers to stand up and turn around, face the audience. Turn around. And I would ask all of you to share a round of applause with me on behalf of all these good young men and women who do so much for our community. About face? And now, all of you who sat in the front row and thought, "I'm just going to sacrifice myself and get up here," found yourself in the back row, see? Pays off. All right, I'd like to turn this over to our chief for the official ceremony. Chief?
Well, first of all, I want to say, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, thanks for allowing me to be your chief, and I want to thank you for tonight, just the presentation already on lung cancer. You know, it touches my heart. The cancer awareness is something that I don't think that we can rattle the drums loud enough in our community. And Lompoke, last year, for the Relay for Life Cancer, raised $193,000. We surpassed any other community that I know of nearby here. So you know, Lompoke is a giving and a wonderful community, and just for Mrs. Rios, our heart goes out to you. We thank you for all that you've done for cancer in our community. And then also, our police explorers. You guys, these young men and women are the pride and joy of the police department, the Lompoke Police Department. I can't say enough about the things that these kids do for us. They stand up for us and do things where we can't put a police officer in place of. An example of that was the Fourth of July out at the high school, and we had a situation where our officers were all busy that night. We couldn't have anybody at the high school track. And so we were able to supplement that with kids here that were carrying around radios and communicating with us and relaying to me if there was anything going on there while I'm bouncing kids on the rock wall. And it was just great to be able to have them, their presence there and show and support in our community. So thanks, guys. Tonight, I'm proud to be able to formally acknowledge the promotion of Sergeant Ed Lardner to the position of captain with the Lompoke Police Department. Ed Lardner will be the first promotion of an officer raised up in this organization from an officer to captain in more than 20 years. Just over five years ago, myself and Captain Don Deming stood here and were pinned as new captains. Both of us spent our entire careers up to that point working at other agencies. We were brought into the Lompoke Police Department family and accepted with open arms and unending support, but faced with the challenges of learning a new assignment came the greater challenge of learning a new police culture. Sometimes in our profession, the bigger challenge is not the added or increased responsibilities of new assignments, but the nuances of new personnel. One could argue that bringing in someone from outside prevents or avoids issues of favoritism or past agendas, and I think to a point, that's true. But the strength of an organization is evident in its ability to develop its personnel and have people that are qualified, prepared, and willing to take on added responsibilities that promotions provide. We call this succession planning. Although this is done more informally than formally, by sending our personnel to various training and encouraging higher education, we're trying to prepare our people for higher and greater opportunities. When I considered whether to test candidates from inside or to allow outside candidates to compete against the insiders, I carefully weighed the potential that we already had amongst us. After counseling with other leaders and other organizations around us, I chose to stay inside. Three very qualified candidates were interviewed and represented the Lompoke Police Department and the city of Lompoke extremely well. Ed Lardner has been chosen by me to be the new captain of our agency. Captain Lardner has worked for the Lompoke Police Department since 1994. He served 23 years before that and retired from the United States Air Force at the rank of Master Sergeant of the Security Police. Ed worked one year for the U.S. Capitol Police in Washington DC. He then moved out west and worked for two years for the Los Angeles Police Department. And fortunately for us, he wasn't there long enough to get too indoctrinated. Then he moved to the Central Coast. Somebody else knows who that was aimed at. I, on the other side, started with LA Sheriff's Department. Ed holds five Associate of Arts degrees from various community colleges. He has a bachelor's degree from Chapman University and a master's degree from American Military University. Ed was recently married to his beautiful wife, Amy Rose Lardner, and has also brought his daughter, Brooke, to witness her dad's promotion. We're going to proceed with the badge pinning ceremony. After that, after the ceremony is over, I'm going to invite those that can leave to go over to the Emergency Operations Center in the police department where we're going to have some snacks and cake and then, and to say our congratulations to Sergeant Lardner. So let's move on.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Edward Lardner.
I, Edward Lardner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support the laws and policies of the city of Lompoke.
That I will support the laws and policies of the city of Lompoke.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Of the office of police captain of the city of Lompoke to the best of my ability. My fault. My fault. That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Of the office of police captain.
Of the office of police captain.
Of the city of Lompoke.
Of the city of Lompoke.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you. On your own, please. On your own.
Before I allow Captain Lardner time with the microphone, because it'll probably be about a half hour before we get away, I'd like to introduce recognized Chief Dabney, recently retired, and also, and also Sheriff Brown. Sheriff, thanks for being here. And also our friend Dave Widham, captain from the Santa Barbara Police Department. Thanks for being here, Dave.
I'll keep this short. Wow. Sorry I messed up that part at the end there. That was a lot of words for me. You know, I was homeless, living in a car. I have no high school diploma. I went through five associate's degrees because I didn't think I was smart enough to do a bachelor's degree. I had bachelor's, then I did a master's, and I couldn't have done all that without the support of family, friends, people I work with to let me know that I am good enough, smart enough, and that I can accomplish just about anything I want. This has been a goal of mine, to eventually move up through the ranks of the Lompoke Police Department. I think it's important to do something like that, have succession planning, like the chief had said. I think that's very, very important, and I'm glad it happened in our agency finally. It's been a long time coming, and I'm very glad that it was me. And I had great competition, Sergeant Clement, Sergeant Strange, you know, and luckily I won out, thank goodness for me. You know, it's, I'm just thankful to be here, and I'm glad that everybody came and to show your support. And when I look back at when I was on the motorcycle for five years and the most hated man in Lompoke to, to now, you know, I have to put a filter on this mouth. So it's going to be a lot of work, and the chief says I need to work on it, and I've been trying to do a good job. So thank you, everybody, everybody for coming, and thank you for your support, and look forward to seeing you next door at the police department right after the event. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chief, Captain, which was it? Oh, yeah, there we go. We're going to take a five-minute break to let it kind of everybody go in their direction. Thank you all for coming and supporting Captain Lardner. Okay, everybody in the back, there's plenty of seats. Don't be bashful. Come on and sit down. You don't have to sit in the front row. You can get quite a ways back. Okeydoke. Next, we will have our city administrators' executive director's status report.
Honorable Mayor, council members, community audience and viewers, first I'd like to congratulate Captain Lardner. And tonight, I do have a few items to announce. First, in an effort to further the city's customer service initiative, city employees whom interface with our customers at the counter at city hall and our other city facility sites are now wearing name tags to help our customers identify city employees by name. And this is a low-cost effort to further provide our customers excellence, customer service. Mr. Mayor and council, I would like to remind everyone that this is the season of hope. Food and toy drive is now underway, and the Lompoke firefighters have teamed up with other firefighters from the county, collecting non-perishable food items which will be donated to our local food bank, and as well are collecting new unwrapped toys that will be donated to our local Toys for Tots program. So stop by Fire Station 2 at 1100 Northeast Street and make your donation to ensure the upcoming holiday season is a little brighter for our Lompoke friends and neighbors. And the drive will continue through December 15th. Lastly, over the last several months, our city's department heads have been training on the city's Emergency Operations Center Plan, and this training will be put to test on November 15th, as our EOC team will be participating in an exercise in coordination with the county and the Public Health Department annual statewide exercise. The purpose for this exercise is to test, practice, and put to use the systems, technologies, policies, and procedures currently in place to coordinate our response during a large-scale disaster which might affect our city and our county. This exercise is designated to reinforce our city team's capability to activate and manage a large-scale incident and emphasize the ability to coordinate, communicate, and plan for a large-scale event. I take this opportunity to commend Fire Chief Ladipow and Battalion Chief Mark Bray for taking the lead on providing this important disaster preparedness training for the EOC management team, and I would say that I'm very impressed with our team, and it's well-prepared for the drill on the 15th. Mr. Mayor, I have no other announcements or requests to make tonight. Thank you.
And we received a very nice letter from the State Department of Emergency Management thanking both the chief and the battalion chief for their great effort in facilitating all of these things, and they think we're just wonderful, and I think it was something about walking on water, but you know, it was down in that range. Any other staff requests and announcements, Stacy? Nope? Okay. And now we'll move to oral communications. This is your opportunity to spend five minutes talking to us about any item. If it is an item that's on an agenda item, if you can wait, it'd be easier if you had told us then, but if you can't wait, come on down. And there's a good man with an "I voted" sticker.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, council members, Ken Austin, the Lompoke Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. I have a long list of things I've been involved in here in the last couple of months, and I won't go through the whole list because I know you have a busy night and you want to get home and watch election results, and some of you want to have parties and stuff. So real quickly, going all the way back to August 26th, I attended the Wine Ordinance Meeting in Billton. Quite a contingent of folks there, and that's an issue that's continuing on. I know the county's continuing to work on it, and there'll be more meetings coming up, so. And they probably already announced them, and I don't know exactly when they are yet. But on September 10th, we had a volunteer recognition for all our volunteers for Old Town Market. Without those volunteers, we would not have an Old Town Market. So I felt it important we do something. We just got some food and some drink and just said, "Thank you." And I think they really appreciated us doing that. So that was a good evening. The 19th of September, got to meet the new Federal Correctional Complex Warden, Warden Richard Ives. For those who don't know him, he's second time here at Lompoke. Very interested in getting involved and doing things with the community. He's already doing some projects to help the Lompoke Valley in Bloom and Haybales and Cocktails. So if you haven't met him, if you have a chance, please. He's, again, a very interesting man. Also attended a Wine Ghetto Park meeting in Amplos Winery on that same day. I'm not sure how that's coming, but I hope it's coming because it's a good possibility to bring some food into that area and some events down there if the group can come together and put together their park group. Also, if you missed it, and I think probably most of you did unfortunately, our chamber luncheon on the 20th of September, we had Brigadier General Thomas Gould from Vandenberg who came and spoke. He was with President Bush on 9/11. He was carrying the nuclear briefcase with all the top-secret information. Fantastic, fantastic talk. If you ever have a chance to hear him speak about that, please go see him because it needs to be a movie made about it. Very interesting. So on the 21st of September, I went to San Luis at the So, on the 21st of September, I went to San Luis at the Embassy Suites and welcomed our new class of leadership Lompoc Valley. That was their kickoff team-building weekend. So they started that. On the way home from that, I attended the Friends of Allen Hancock Committee Meeting at Hancock College with the interim president. That night, we had a cash mob at Samantha's Restaurant, another good event. If you haven't tried that, check it out up on Northeast Street next to Texas cattle company. On the 28th of September, we had our annual Airmen's Barbecue sponsored by the Chamber, and of course, many businesses here in town. I mean, it was a fantastic day. I bet that we served at least 1,000, 1,200 people meals that day, and all the people really, really appreciated that. Then that same night, we had the Leadership Lompoc Kickoff Dinner at the Mission, and again, they had General Gould speak, but he spoke on leadership. Let's see, I'll blast through these real quick. October 13th, I talked about the stand-down. That was the big day. The stand-down event was held at the Fair Park in Santa Maria. Fantastic event. Great turnout of people, exact number of veterans, I'm not exactly sure, but I'd say there was at least 100 veterans there for that event and probably about 600 volunteers. But a very well-oiled event, went very smoothly. On the 16th of October, I had an opportunity to tour the Allen Hancock Safety Center. Boy, what a great asset that's gonna be when that's completed. So, we're already talking about plans and what we can do to help prepare for that as it's coming up. Let's see. On the 18th of October, I had a Mary Oriole Forum here, and as well as that same week, we had a city council forum right here in the chambers. And then we had a school board forum on the 22nd. I'd like to thank the city staff, Laura Miranda, and all the staff here that helped set things up and organize it. So it went real smooth. Didn't know how hard it was to conduct a forum. So, it was a lot of work. Let's see, on October 30th, I met with a group of tourism folks from throughout the county with the Santa Barbara CEO, the Santa Barbara County, Chandra Waller, to discuss the value of what tourism does for the entire county. I think it was important for her to hear from all of us what we contribute back for the little bit of money we do get from the county. So I think it was very well done, and quarterly, we're gonna continue to have meetings with her. On October 31st, I met with members of the Solvang Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau to talk about some things we could do working together, some different kinds of programs. So, then last Thursday, we had our Small Business, Promote Small Business Saturday Meeting, our first one at the Chamber. We're having another one this Thursday to bring. November 24th is Small Business Day in America, and we're doing what we can to promote that and get folks to participate and support our local small businesses. So, we're continuing to work on that. Couple real quick more here. We had a ribbon-cutting at Orley's Collectibles on Saturday, another new business opening up. Tomorrow and Thursday, Grocery Outlet is doing interviews in the Chamber Conference Room for employees for that business that will be opening up here very, very soon. So we're excited about that. And then on October, excuse me, on November 15th, our next Chamber Luncheon, we're having Robert Cardahania from Dinmat's gonna speak, and that will be held at the Red Zone. If you'd like to come, just call us and sign up.
What were the hours for the job interviews?
8:30 to 4:00.
On?
Tomorrow and Thursday.
Okay. For Grocery Outlet?
For Grocery Outlet.
And they were putting their refrigerated cases in yesterday?
Yeah, and you know what's really interesting is, they came in almost immediately. When the group came in, was doing the interview process for them, came in and says, "Well, are they gonna come in? Are they gonna, you know, see about being members of the Chamber?" Five minutes later, they're in there, and they were signing up to be members of the Chamber. Very excited. They're doing some great stuff. They're gonna donate $1,000 worth of food to the food pantry on that grand opening day. They're gonna do some stuff to support some of the youth groups as far as helping with some of the events going on on that grand opening day also. So, yeah, they're very excited about being here and very involved at this point.
And they have an estimated opening date of mid-December.
Correct.
Yep. Good things. Any questions? Councilmember Lingle.
Mr. Seif, would you like to say something real quickly about the building? I mean, beneficially, financially beneficial to the Chamber to get rid of it, I guess?
Well, it is. You know, decisions were made back in 2004 to purchase that building. The plans to pay the financing for that over the years hasn't come through. So basically, we have to find a way to recoup that. And then the only option we've come up with has been a long discussion, ever since I've been at the Chamber for almost a year and a half now. That's been a hot topic. Okay, what are we gonna do about this building and trying to pay the loan off? And we haven't found any other options to do that, so we'll put it on the market to do that. And hopefully, realistically, if someone buys it, you know, we might just stay there. Hopefully, they'll say, "Hey, look, are you interested in staying in the building?" I mean, people want renters. So, that might be an option. So, we'll see what happens. I hear there has been some interest around town, though.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay. And one last thing. I also would like to thank Mrs. Martner for her service on the city council. Four years, it's a long time. It's a tough job. Being any elected official's a tough job. So thank you for your service.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Holders, resident of Lompoc and also a member of the Human Service Commission. I wanted to address the council this evening to tell you that last night, our Human Service Commission did meet and voted unanimously for the council to reconsider withdrawing from the CDBG part of the consortium. And this letter was, I believe, in all of your boxes this morning. It says, "We have carefully reviewed the consortium agreement with the County of Santa Barbara and the City of Lompoc. The reports submitted to you by Diana Lockhart on June 19th, 2012, and additional documentation regarding the administration of the community development grant funds. As a new three-year cycle on the CDBG, urban-county partnership begins on October 1st of 2013. We felt it was important to evaluate the city's continuing involvement in the CDBG consortium and to make a recommendation for action. The City of Lompoc's involvement in the Santa Barbara County CDBG consortium was an advantage for the period of 2006 through 2009 due to the additional funds available as a result of the agreement. Since 2009, the city's CDBG funding allocation has steadily declined due to the reduced federal funding. Membership in the urban-county partnership prohibits the city from applying to the state of California for competitive emergency grant solutions, CDBG Consortium of Care, Homeless Assistance, and Home Funds. Our agencies are not eligible for direct application to the Stewart McKinney Homeless Assistance Act funds. This limits the ability of our local providers, specifically those serving the homeless population, to access all available resources. As the city staff members are responsible for extensive record-keeping in the administration of the CDBG funds and the involvement of the county staff members does not appear to improve efficiency. City staff members worked diligently to compile the necessary information for the consolidated annual performance evaluation report, other words, the CAEPER. And prior to 2006, when the City of Lompoc relinquished its status as an entitlement city to join the urban-county consortium, city staff members completed the required five-year consolidation and annual action plans. Local administration of the CDBG funds will streamline administration and ensure that the City of Lompoc is accessing all possible funding sources. We request the City of Lompoc begin an application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a status as to an entitlement city, and amend the current urban-county partnership agreement to remain in the CDBG consortium until Lompoc's entitlement status is reestablished. The amendment should ensure that the timing of the city's withdrawal from the CDBG consortium does not adversely affect the City of Lompoc or the County of Santa Barbara's allocations. And I want you all to be aware that the commission has spent the last two weeks going through numerous pages. I think at one point, just one report alone, I printed out over 300 pages on my computer so that I could read it and not just look at it. So it wasn't something that was taken lightly. They gave a lot of thought to it. If you have any questions, I'll be delighted to answer them.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. City Administrator, is it correct that, if I'm remembering correctly, Councilmember Starbuck recently requested that the council readdress this as well? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so I just wanted to be sure that this would be coming up on a future agenda?
Yes, Councilmember Costa and Mayor Council. The futures council agenda?
It'll run off.
Provides for initial report to discuss a path for that. It's scheduled for January.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much, and I'm particularly interested with regard to the McKinney funds that we no longer get, because that has really adversely affected our shelter programs. So, know that we're moving forward. Anyone else?
Pamela, local resident. I just want to say I attended the meetings of this group, and I can't tell you how conscientious they have been in arriving at this decision. And they looked at all the information, all the considerations, and spent a lot of time doing it, a lot of paperwork to go through. So, I commend them and their volunteers, and I thank them. Thank you.
My name is Yadidia DeVries, and I rise before you on three unrelated issues. First, at previous council meetings, there's been interest both from the public and from the dais to have made public the list of pending council agenda items and city council requests. And so I'd just like to urge the council to make that available as soon as possible. Second, I would like to understand more about why the special meeting on October 30th was canceled. At the meeting, the city council meeting of October 2nd, Councilmember Martner requested that the issue of joining or doing a forensic, joining the county's forensic audit or doing our own forensic audit be discussed prior to tonight, the election. And the council agreed. In fact, that discussion concluded with the city administrator asking, "As a point of clarification, you wanted information on what it would cost to do a joint audit with the county, or to work with the county and to extend the audit to include our data?" Martner said yes, and that, and what it would cost to do a forensic audit. And then the mayor ended, concluded with, "Probably come at it from both directions." Okay, so Tuesday, October 30th, how's that look for everybody the day before Halloween? And everybody nodded and said yes. So I would just like to understand why that meeting was canceled, how that decision was made, and by whom. And then the third item to which I rise tonight is just to wish the mayor and Bob Lingle good luck with your reelection bid tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The agenda item list is on here. The agenda item list is scheduled for the November 20th meeting. Report on outstanding council requests. City Administrator, you may want to comment on why the November 30th meeting was canceled, but basically, the consultant stiffed us from October 30th.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask the same question as well. Why was that meeting canceled since there was a majority of the council that decided to have the meeting? However, I, as a council member, was not contacted whether that meeting should be canceled. So I'd really like to know where the decision came from and whether there was a majority from the council. And if so, when was that?
Thank you.
Councilmember Martner, Mayor Council. We were notified, staff was notified, by the managing principal of the consultant who is providing the work, which was agendized for the 30th, that the work was not completed and would not, he would not be available to present the work. And actually communicated through a letter indicating that and provided that to all of you. So that, because based on that matter, I determined that the meeting would be canceled and that the items, the two items that were agendized for that special meeting would be placed on the agenda for the 20th.
Councilmember Martner.
So for the record, the city administrator made a decision not to have a council meeting based on one agenda item that the report was not present. But the second agenda item was to discuss a forensic audit, and the city administrator made the decision not to carry that. I find that unusual, since I believe that we council members are the ones that are the decision-makers and need to have a majority to make decisions. So I really like to understand on what authority the city administrator makes the decision to cancel a meeting.
Okay. Well, I can't imagine why we would have a meeting when we didn't have the material to present, but go ahead. You want to address that, City Administrator?
Mr. Mayor, the forensic audit?
You're out of order. The city administrator is speaking next, answering your question. Stand by. We'll come back to you.
Councilmember Martner, Mayor and Council. I did provide you an email. I did make the decision that without the information, the report, we would not hold a meeting. And I asked for each of you to contact me if you had questions. And it was a call that I made based on we didn't have information for that meeting.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the information transpired, I sent an email to the city administrator regarding why this meeting was canceled. I got an automatic reply that the city administrator was out of the office. Then I later on get a phone call from the legal attorney explaining that the city administrator has asked to call me and explain why the meeting was canceled. The city, the legal counsel basically explained to me that without having the report from Urban Futures, it didn't make sense for the council to discuss a potential forensic audit. That was a conclusion that was drawn perhaps by the city administrator and the legal counsel. However, that conclusion doesn't necessarily follow what the council asked. The council asked for a forensic audit information. I believe that that information may have been available. However, it was not made available. Out of convenience, I don't know. I still don't have the information. So nevertheless, the point is, is that there was a decision made by the city administration that directly contradicts what the public record says. And the public record says that this council, by a majority, had approved a meeting on two items, the forensic audit and the report from Urban Futures. That is in the public record, and it should be stated as that. And why the city administration made a decision to cancel both agenda items is still not clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who is next to speak to us? Seeing no one rise, we'll close our communication, and we'll come back to the council for the consent calendar. This evening, we have approval of the minutes of October 16th. We have approval of expenditures for payroll for $1,027,000. We have a voucher register in the amount of $1,205,000. We have a voucher register in the amount of $375,000. We have a voucher register in the amount of $224,000, a voucher register in the amount of $814,000, and I will not participate in the vote on check number 308903 to Smitty's Towing for $394. Item number three, approval of resolution number 581312, street closure for the annual Lompoc Valley Children's Christmas Season Parade. Item number four, annual SB 1693 compliance report for AB 1600. In the initial copy that was distributed, there was a typographical error on page attachment five. The amount shown as prior adjustment actually was the amount for plus fees collected. So the zero the zeros that were on the lower line belonged on the upper line. So there's that one correction to the, to that item. And item number five, the City of Lompoc Pool Maintenance and Assessment District Statement for the period July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012. Is there any item on here that a council member would like to have pulled? Seeing no light lit, could I have a motion and a second to move forward with this? Councilmember Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar.
And a second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with the one item correction that I mentioned. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes four, zero, and one absent. And now we're going to move on to appointments. The first one would be council appointments of associate members to the Economic Development Commission. Chair. Yeah, hang on. Just a moment, let me get to the right page here. And I would ask the chairman of the Economic Development Committee to come forward and discuss the recommendations of the committee.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Steve Pepe, chairman of the Economic Development Council, my vice chair, Janelle Osborne is with us as well. We have two open slots that we'd like to fill with associate members who would participate, and if there wasn't a regular member there, would have the ability to vote in, so that we don't run into quorum problems. Since we're all volunteers, many of us have day jobs, some of us have night jobs and other commitments, we can't always get as many people there as we would like. You have a list in front of you of the, of the folks that we've recommended. As I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we filled the two regular member slots. The third regular member slot is not yet open, so we can't work on that tonight. And there are three associate member slots that need to be filled. And my recollection is that Ken Ostini was going to be an, Ken Ostini or somebody from the Chamber of Commerce who holds his position would be a associate member, and two others are listed. And so we'd like the council to act on if they would. The other suggestion that was made in our group that you may want to think about, since there will be a new council person after this evening, you may want to let the new council person appoint the two associates, since each of you have all appointed three or more members of the committee. Either way, however you want to decide it is fine with us, but that's another way to have the new council member have some input into what we're doing.
Thank you. That's an interesting point I hadn't thought about. What do you guys think about that? Do you want to go ahead and appoint the associates now, or do you want to carry it over to the new council?
Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. Isn't it true with other commissions that when the council member leaves, the commissioner, does the commissioner stay on that commission, or they leave as well?
Some do, some don't. This particular commission doesn't work that way. There are, we each appointed some people, but they don't, they don't change with us.
Right, okay.
They stay for their term, and the associate members would too. I'm, personally, I'm happy to just go ahead based on the committee's recommendations for the associate members, but I, I'd like to hear each of you on the, on his point about the new council. Councilmember Martner.
You need to elect how many for the associate? Two or three?
I, we've got, as I understand it, three. The, the chamber would be, which is now Mr. Ostini or his successor, plus two others. We're looking for threes, associate members.
And you have three on the list.
Yes. And we have three on the list. That's correct.
Easy decision on my part.
Councilmember Lingle.
I'm okay with the recommendations.
Okay. In that case, I'd accept a motion and a second to move forward with the committee's recommendations. Who would like to move it?
I move that we accept the recommendations of the Economic Development Commission, Committee.
Okay. And a second, please. Not everybody wants, come on.
I second.
Okay. And is there any further discussion on this before we vote? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes four, zero, with one absent. And the next item for consideration is an appointment to the Planning Commission, and this is Councilmember Lingle's appointment. So Councilmember Lingle, would you like to talk about this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put forward the name of Mr. John Jack Rodenhy as for the new member of the Planning Commission. Mr. Rodenhy has served on the Planning Commission for a number of years, serving as chair for many of those years. I served with Mr. Rodenhy for a number of those years on the Planning Commission. He's an excellent commissioner. He knows planning. Us going into the phase where hopefully we're going to get our general plan, and I think it's important that we have someone with his experience. So I'd like to put together, or put forward the name of John Rodenhy as a member of the Lompoc Planning Commission.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And I don't see Mr. Rodenhy hiding in the audience. Okay. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing no light, could we vote, please? That passes four, zero, and one absent. And now we'll move on to item number eight, discussion regarding options for the stabilization of the Lompoc Theater property. And Joe, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. At a previous meeting, the council asked for a public discussion to occur involving the things that the council had discussed in closed session regarding the options that the city and the successor agency, and by the way, I'm addressing you both as the city council and the successor agency, that the options that you two bodies have with regard to trying to rehabilitate the theater, to stabilize the theater in the condition that it's, because of the condition it's in. The options are basically foreclosure options, accepting deeds in lieu, using eminent domain, using some nuisance abatement authority, or trying to deal with a negotiated deal, if you will, between LHCDC and the Oversight Board and the city, and a combination of funding. With regard to the eminent domain, what that means is the city could use its authority as a public body to, excuse me, to acquire the theater property. And they could do that because there would be a public purpose being served by that, both public parking, as well as having a facility that's available for the public use. That would mean that the city would, in essence, take the property, purchase the property from LHCDC, who's the current owner, and in essence, wipe out the deeds of trust that are on the property, but it's not in the sense of wiping them out. What happens is, in an eminent domain action, let's just use a number. The number's not based on any facts on what the property's worth that we're talking about. I'm just using a number, so we have something to work with. Let's say a piece of property is worth $500,000. If there's deeds of trust against that property, for, say, three deeds of trust, each one worth $100,000, the city, or whoever the eminent domain authority is, is doing, but the city would put into court $500,000, because that's what the property's worth. And then that money would be divvied up among the people who hold the deeds of trust and the property owner. So the amount the city pays isn't increased because there are deeds of trust. Sometimes when properties are purchased under eminent domain, there's deeds of trust, and the deeds of trust are actually more valuable than the property that they're secured by, or at least by, on paper, they're more valuable. So using that same example, the property's worth $500,000. Let's say there's three deeds of trust on the property, each worth $200,000. That means there's $600,000 of debt on the $500,000 piece of property. What happens then is whoever has the first deed of trust gets their $200,000, and again, I'm roughing that out. Whoever has the second deed of trust gets their $200,000, and the person who has the third deed of trust would get $100,000, and the person who owns the property wouldn't get any money, because it's all taken up by the people who have the deed of trust. But the city would need to come up with the money to purchase the property. Actually, in all of the options that are available to the council, I don't see an option that doesn't involve the city having to use some general fund money to carry out the option. So moving on from the eminent domain, and the eminent domain process can be a lengthy process. It could be four to six months to a year before the property actually transfers ownership from the current owner to the city. Another option, because the city on the theater has a deed of trust, it's a second deed of trust, but they have a deed of trust, they could foreclose, just like anyone could foreclose on a deed of trust. If they were to foreclose, the third deed of trust, the holder of the third deed of trust would be wiped out, but the holder of the first deed of trust wouldn't be wiped out, and the holder of the first deed of trust is the successor agency. So the city could end up owning the property, have the authority then to do the revisions, the rehabilitation of the property, but still be subject to that first deed of trust. The successor agency could foreclose. If they foreclose, since they're the first deed of trust, all the lower deeds of trust, the city's and the one held by the private person, the Calverts, would be wiped out, and the city, the successor agency would then own the property. That process, however, as you know, would have to go through the Oversight Board, would have to go through the Department of Finance, and we sort of tried that once, and it wasn't too successful. Another way that the city could become owner is by taking it what's, an alternative to a foreclosure, take a deed in lieu, similar to what was done with the Marx House. Rather than actually go through the foreclosure process, LHCDC could sign the property over to the city. If that's done, then the city becomes the owner. However, the first deed of trust stays on the property, and in this approach, the third deed of trust stays on the property as well. So the city owns a piece of property that has two deeds of trust. Just as the city could take a deed in lieu, the, for, the successor agency could take a deed in lieu from LHCDC, and if they, if the successor agency did that, then the two deeds of trust, the second and the third, would stay applicable to the property. A sixth option is for the city to use its nuisance abatement authority, which the city has done on a couple of occasions, and that way the city could, without taking ownership of the property, do the rehabilitation. Again, remember, any of the rehabilitation is going to be done, because there isn't another fund, it's going to have to come out of the city's general fund, because there's no other money available to do the rehabilitation. In that situation, the city could do the, the abatement of the nuisance, and the nuisance being a building that's not in proper condition. And then the city would put a lien on the property. That lien would then be recorded against the property and be collected when taxes are collected. Since the taxes wouldn't be paid by LHCDC, because they're already in arrears and they don't have any money to pay taxes, the county of Santa Barbara then would actually pay the city of Lompoc that money, that, to recoup that money, or to repay the money that was spent by the city. And then in five years, the county could foreclose on the property on a tax foreclosure to try to collect the property back, or try to collect that money. And the city could at that point, and it could be three, four, or five years from now, could go forward and try to purchase the property at that tax sale. That's a lengthy process, the tax sale is. The nuisance abatement is probably about a four to six month process to get all the right paperwork done, and all the orders done, and then the time for doing the improvement is probably the same. The improvement activity would be the same, no matter which option we took. It's which, depending upon which option we took, it would take a little bit longer or a little less time to actually get the authority that the city would have to be able to do the improvements. Then the last option that was laid on in the paper is one that the mayor had sort of derived. It was some thinking about trying to, in essence, negotiate with all the parties, all the stakeholders, to have a deal done that would end up with the theater being able to be stabilized. And that approach would involve trying to get the Department of Finance and the Oversight Board to agree to, in essence, the city, and it's a little complicated, so I'll try to keep it straight in my own head. The, the process would be, the city would take over the ownership of the theater by buying the deed of trust from the agency for a minimal amount. The city would agree to use some of the money that the city has available to it to fund the parking, the transit center that's in downtown, because some of that money, some of that property was purchased with redevelopment money. And so understanding that one of the goals of the Oversight Board is to get money to the taxing entities, an approach could be used, some of the city that would be used that's available for the transit center to buy back, if you will, the property that the agency owns there, or that the agency money was used to purchase that property, to create a pot of money...
I think you need to explain that now you're talking about the three downtown parking lots.
Yes.
Okay, you didn't say that.
Oh, I'm sorry. The transit center parking lot, yeah.
Yeah.
The location of the transit center would be in the parking lot, the downtown parking lots. Yes, sorry. And so that money then could be used to, for lack of a better way of describing it, convince the Oversight Board and the Department of Finance that it makes sense for the city to be able to become the owner of the theater, because money will be able to flow through the agency to the taxing entities for it, for a site and a building that currently is, has a negative value. And the reason it has a negative value is because the, the last appraisal we had showed that property worth $700,000. And as you know, we have three deeds of trust that are well over $700,000. There was a, that was a 2009 appraisal. 2005 appraisal showed the property worth $875,000. So if you take the 200, the $700,000 appraisal, which, and I'm not even sure if that's going to reflect all of the devaluation of property, but assuming that it's a good appraisal to use, the building itself needs to be rehabilitated, and the rehabilitation cost, it's got to have some seismic retrofitting, the roof had to be fixed, and it needs to have some mold issues taken care of. The cost to do that is probably more than the $700,000 that the property's worth. And so because of that, another negotiating discussion with the Department of Finance and Oversight Board would be, we can get you, and, and I'm sorry for not completing the thought on the money going from the parking lots where the transit center would be located to the Oversight Board to be distributed. That's about $233,000 that the agency had originally put in to purchase those properties. So assuming we get $233,000 that we can generate from that transit center, we could go to the Oversight Board and say, you currently have, the agency currently has a property that's worth, worth nothing, but we could, here's a pocket of $233,000 that we'll give you if you'll just let us own the theater building. All that does is get ownership, and, and we would get rid of all the deed of trust. With the Calvert's deed of trust, we've had some discussion with the Calvert's, and they seem interested in agreeing to lower the amount of their, that they would be demanding back for their deed of trust. Their deed of trust is about $175,000. Some has been paid down, but then there's arrears and interest, so it's probably even more than $175,000. But they showed some interest in being willing to take less than that, a significant amount less, maybe $25,000, to buy out their interest in the deed of trust, as long as the city agreed to have a covenant that said the building would always be used and called a Calvert Performance Arts Center, or something like that. So again, that, now you understand why I said it was a complex one. That, so if that were to happen, then the city would have ownership, but again, we'd have to find money to put, to stabilize the building. And the cost for stabilizing the building... And the cost for stabilizing the building, from the best information that we have available today, it's probably $900,000 to $2 million to put the building back into a place where it's, the roof is completely fixed and the inside is at least rehabilitated to the point where it's not going to decay more because of the mold. The range comes from two reports, one that came from a contractor to just deal with the roof, and the other that came from, if you remember, a while back, we had a report done by a structural engineer to put the building back into a usable space, and that was about a $2 million. So that's how I came up with that range. So my concluding comments are, it's a tough situation. There aren't any magic bullets that we can come up with. Whatever, if you determine that it's absolutely important to stabilize this building, I have not been able to find a way to stabilize that without you having to decide to use some general fund money to make that stabilization occur. And in terms of the options, I think the most important thing, if you want to have this done, is to have control of the building. And the only way that I see of getting certainty of control of the building is using eminent domain. That's the only thing you, that's the only thing you don't have to go to the Oversight Board for to get control of that building, is use eminent domain. You also could use the nuisance abatement approach. The nuisance abatement approach wouldn't give you control of the building, but at least it would give you the opportunity to stabilize it. Again, however, you'd have to use general fund money to do that. I'm open for questions.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. On option six, city stabilized theater through nuisance abatement, it says that the sale process would not likely occur until five years after the first date LHCDC failed to pay the property taxes assessed against the theater. Is it true that LHCDC is already in arrears, so that date, technically the clock could already be ticking within that five years?
Yes.
Do we have an idea, can we get that information from the county?
I think it was 2010, 11.
Is that what the next sentence says? So 2010, 11, so technically we may already be a year into the five years. Mr. Wilkie, I believe we spoke about this. Is it true that this could occur in less than five years?
If you're talking about the recruitment of the funds that we are spending, that we would spend on getting the facility to a stabilized point, the fact that we are participating in the county's, what they call a teeter program, as soon as we put the lien on the property, the next year that that lien is on the property, the county would reimburse us for that lien. And the lien would be based on the cost that we put on the lien for the stabilization costs. The difference that Mr. Panoni was saying is that the five years is when the county can then try to sell the property to recoup their unpaid taxes. The taxes, we're assuming here that the owner would not pay the lien, and we're also assuming that through the abatement process that the owner does not do the abatements that we are requesting be done. So for us, we would get the money back within one tax cycle.
But my question is, is that sale process could occur before the five-year time period is up? It's not a required five years. The county can decide to have that sale before the five years?
I don't know what the regulations and rules are for them to be able to try to sell it before that five years. I just know there's a five-year limit at which time that they can. Whether they can do it earlier than that, I am not, I don't know that answer.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a statutory five years. I don't think there's, at least for a tax, for a tax sale, it's five years.
Okay, that's a confident.
But you're right, the five years technically would start from 2011. Since the first tax year that they didn't pay was 2010, 11, the five years would start running from 2011.
Right, so technically we're already over a year in.
Right.
And this, and what I want to clarify for option six as well, is that this is the only option where the city could recoup the expense to stabilize the property?
Yes, however, remember, if the goal, if the important aspect to this process is for the theater to be, end up being a community facility, when the property gets on the tax, gets up for tax sale, unless the city purchases it, somebody else could purchase it, and we don't know what happened. And if the city decided to purchase it, then the money that they received as payment for the nuisance abatement costs, I'm guessing the city would use to buy the property back from the county because the county's minimum bid is going to be the taxes that are owed.
Do we have an idea what the estimate of those taxes would be?
Well, we know that there's roughly $10,000 that's due and maybe another $10,000, but that the nuisance abatement cost would be whatever it costs us to do the abatement. So we're, you know, in the, almost a million dollars.
See, so although I understand the goal could be, is to have this as a community facility or community arts center, I'm not convinced that it's the goal to have the city have ownership of the building. So that's something we need to discuss. For me, right now, to stabilize the building, which seems to be the most pressing issue, option six seems like the best thing to me right now, but I want to consider all the options. Thank you.
Councilmember Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having read your report, thank you, by the way. There is a lot of options, and you know, the money side gets very much emphasized in the report. How much money would the city have to spend, where, you know, it might potentially come from? We only see the only route is general funds. There is one thing that I'm not, I'm not getting a good feeling from this report, and that is the time. We're talking about stabilizing a building that is, that has, that is in terrible disrepair, and I think the biggest thing is to stabilize the roof. Of all of these options, I'd like to know which one is the one that does that the quickest, the fastest?
If LHCDC were willing to give a deed in lieu to the city, I would say that that's probably the quickest way because that process could happen, would take as long as us to prepare the documents to have the deed transferred from the LHCDC to the city. The city would then become the owner and could do the property, the rehabilitation, you know, as long as it takes after that.
And then we basically pay for it, and there is no way to get any monies back with that option, as far as.
In addition to that, the agency, the successor, still has the deed of trust.
Absolutely. Okay, so then I like, one of the options that has not been explored here, which all the council received an email from Justin and Anne Rouger, I don't know if the.
Actually, I apologize, I was going to mention that.
Okay. You know, reading that email, which all council received it, that email basically proposes that the city leases the property from LHCDC for $1 a month, and the city moves in and does the repairs. Would that be the fastest approach yet to stabilize the building?
I don't think it'd be any faster than doing the deed in lieu from the LHCDC. However, the significant difference in taking that approach is then the city doesn't have any ownership interest at all in the improvements that it's making, and LHCDC actually would be the beneficiary of the work the city did because then you'd have a building that was actually more marketable, and LHCDC could sell the building.
Okay, okay. And the last question that I have, and I don't know if it is for you, or I assume that I have actually two more questions for the staff. Regarding the stabilization of the theater, we are really talking only about the roof repairs as the immediate thing, or are we talking about that the mold needs to be removed and other things? I mean, we need to define what stabilization means so we can put some very specific dollar amounts to it.
That's why there's a range.
Well, but the range is.
The $900,000, and there may be some who think it could be less than $900,000, but in my looking at the documentation, the $900,000 is to put, to completely fix the roof so that it's not going to leak anymore and you won't have to fix it later. And the reason that is expensive is because the roof is in such bad shape that you can't even go on the roof to fix the roof. You have to use stuff or equipment to fix the roof. It doesn't include taking care of the mold that's already in there. That would be another $100, $200,000 to take care of the mold, and someone will have to decide whether, you know, as long as the mold stays there, it's only going to get worse. Even though no new water would be getting in, the current shape of it would be getting worse. So a decision would have to be made, do we fix the mold at the same time, or do we just do the roof and then fix the mold later? It's not my decision, but I would recommend that you do the mold at the same time you do the roof, just so that it's completely stabilized.
And that's on the order of $1 million?
You mean, the two together?
Right.
Probably.
About $1 million. Okay, thank you. My last question is to the Economic Development Director. This, this report here is basically the logistics, the monies, you know, the Oversight Committee and all of that kind of stuff. I would like to ask, from the point of view of economic development, what is the value of the theater to this community? And the reason why I'm asking that question is because that is a very important question in the decision-making. How much money is this community willing to spend on this building and how necessary is for economic development? And I would like our Economic Development Director, that I'm sure she has a strategy for the development of downtown, as to what is the value and the importance of this, so the council can take into account that in the decision-making. And now that we do have also our Chairman of the Economic Development Committee, I would like to ask the Economic Development Committee's opinion regarding of, and it is an opinion, right, but we take all opinions up here in the council, and we would like to hear what the opinions are so we can make a decision. And please, thank you.
But we all understand that this question hasn't been asked before, so she's using her professional information but not a prepared report?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Trece Galavan, Economic Development Director, and I just want to share that the Economic Development Committee has spent time talking about downtown, and one of our strategic directions in the strategic plan that we have adopted, council has adopted, does talk about having a vital downtown, having a pedestrian-friendly area, a pedestrian-friendly mall, having a vibrant business area, having tourism attractions, certainly a facility of building in a very prominent location like the theater that is not in use, is not economically generating business in the community, is something that we would want to turn around. So it's certainly, also the community has come out and shown support at council meetings here for the theater, so I think we've heard plenty of testimony in support of different options, and I think the community is still working to look at different options for a viable use of the theater. The community has shared with us all that they would like to see some sort of public use, but I think that we've also heard interesting ideas that could be public-private. And I think this exploration still continues to find the best solution. But the report that Mr. Panoni presented this evening is an important first step on how we go about stabilizing the theater. Chairman, Pepe.
I knew I should have left and gone to Bob Lingel's party tonight. Mr. Mayor, council members, Janelle will follow me. She's spent as much time as any of us have on this issue. To be straightforward, there are two problems with the theater as a theater. One, and I use the word theater to include an entertainment center, however you want to phrase it, one is the parking issue, which I think anybody who's been down in that area recognizes. And the second, what we've been told by the people we've talked to is that it's too small to be a viable entertainment center. The numbers we keep hearing from the people we talk to, and by no means we've not done any exhaustive study, but the folks we've talked to keep telling us, you've got to be looking somewhere around 2,000. Theater seats around 450, and that the numbers don't pencil out to use it as an entertainment center for music or plays or any of those things with 450 people. It pencils out somewhere around 2,000. That doesn't mean there aren't other things you could do with the theater, but to continue it as a theater entertainment center, I don't see how you get over the parking issue, number one, but more importantly, the economics do not look like, at least from the people we've talked to, that you can make it work with only 450. Janelle?
Mayor, council, staff, and the public, this is an emotionally intense conversation even at the committee level, and so we have all really been brainstorming ways to not just make this a public entity that's owned by the city, that's then made responsible for the city to upkeep, because that brings along a whole host of issues and financial problems that we don't see a way out of. And so our biggest hope would be that if it could be stabilized, that we could attract actually a private or a private-public partnership in order to facilitate utilizing a historic site, a community center that could be utilized for something like a brew pub with a movie house in it, or a open-mic, small bands touring through that are hitting everything from Cal Poly down to UCSB, who are looking for the smaller venues to do experimental and interesting things but don't want to do it on a large scale. But it's really going to require private investment who are willing to manage it in order to have a reasonable cost of tickets, reasonable overhead, and so that's what we've been researching. We've had a few individuals who have made trips to Portland, Oregon, to look at, the McMenamin Brothers have a series of old movie houses that are about this size that they've turned into brew pubs. There's the Alamo Drafthouse in Austin, Texas, has recently bought a small theater along the same size in San Francisco and they're refurbishing it in the same way. The issue is the cost of getting the roof. So if we can get to a point where we've stabilized the building, we're looking at ways to approach businesses to come in and take over that responsibility. So we are aggressively looking into it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lingel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Panoni, there's one option that we didn't talk about. It's option number eight. It's not on anyone's agenda, and that's doing nothing. I mean, what happens if we do nothing? What happens with that building? I'm not recommending this, I just, it's a question I want to ask.
From a legal perspective, what will happen is the county will eventually either, either the Calvert's will foreclose, or the city would foreclose, or the agency would foreclose. If that didn't happen, then the next certain thing that will happen, as certain as anything can be, is the county will foreclose for taxling, and then the property will go up for public auction, and whoever bids on that public auction will own the property, and then whatever they want to do with the property will have to come through, if it's not the city, they'll have to come through the city for processing whatever they want to do with that property.
And that would take the four years for the county to foreclose on it?
Just to get the foreclosure occurred, yes. I don't know how long after that it would take for, if someone, if a private person purchased it, how long it would take for them to actually come forward and do something with the building. In fact, if nothing's done with the building, it'll probably get. In fact, if nothing's done with the building, it'll probably get so deteriorated that it won't be possible to save the building. Just, that's another quandary of this building. Because the way the building was built, I mean, it's such a solid building, it's also going to be expensive to demolish the building, so...
The city has no...
Maybe sitting there for a long time, because I'm not sure that someone who has their development skill would actually want to even try to do something with it.
At this point, the city has no liability in the building right now. I mean, we have a financial interest in it, but we have actually no liability.
Correct.
Okay. So the parking, we don't have enough parking. Originally, when LH CDC had the property, they had the large lot on the corner of H and Ocean, the large vacant lot. That has now been taken back by the original owner. They also had the lot to the north of the small parking lot with the theater. That has been taken back by that property owner. So we're looking at a theater that seats about 400 people with a very small parking lot, and does it even have an idea how many parking spaces were in the actual theater parking lot?
I think my recollection was it was between 40 and 50.
Forty and 50 parking spaces. So that again, it stresses the point that Mr. Pepe made, is that it's a small facility, very limited parking, up to a million dollars out of the general fund. Now, there is a possibility, I know there's been a lot of talk about the community coming together, doing fundraisers to possibly raise some portion of this million dollars, and that is a possibility. It may not all, this nine hundred thousand, million dollars may not all come out of the general fund. I think if we, whatever we do tonight, if we do something that the city takes ownership in this, and we want to stabilize it, we should assume it's coming out of the general fund, but hopefully not that entire amount. You know, I think we all want to see something happen with that theater. I just, I'm just not sure I want to risk a million dollars of our general fund on doing anything with that at this point.
Let me share a better solution with you when you're done.
I'm done, I'm just talking to myself right now.
Okay. So when I started on this, I had two objectives, looking for a path forward. Number one is a path that would accomplish the repairing the roof in the minimum amount of time, and number two, not spending a great deal of city money, and then developing a public-private partnership, because that seems to be, looking at theaters around the country, the most successful model. There are some that are city-operated, there are some that are privately operated, but the one that I looked at over in other locations was, frequently the city owned the building, but they didn't operate it, and they didn't manage it, they didn't maintain it. They had mostly nonprofits that did it. And to that end, there's a group of people here tonight who've been working in that direction, forming a nonprofit. So the principal obstacles in the short term were the issue of the roof. As Mr. Panoni talked about, it's in very poor condition, but even more beyond that, when we were able to get the earthquake retrofit plans from the Calverts, one of the things that was very obvious was that there's an overlay on the roof, which means the whole roof is sheeted with plywood before the new roofing is put on, and fortunately, a new roof needs to be put on, so there's a good moment in time to do that. So with that information, I went out and I paid for an asbestos test on the roof to determine what the level of the asbestosity was, and layer number three of five is a high-asbestos roof. That required a specialty company to abate the roof, and they came here at no charge to us, and they gave me an estimate, and then we were also supplied with an estimate for replacing the roof. Additionally, the roof structure over the scenery loft didn't meet earthquake code, and that entire structure had to be replaced, and in fact, that's the worst part of the roof, and it's so bad that it's not even safe to walk on. That's what Mr. Panoni alluded to, that it would have to be removed and replaced. So that estimate for all of the roof, which I distributed previously to council, is about $155,000, and that would make it a watertight building. It doesn't solve the mold, and it doesn't solve some of the other issues. On the earthquake retrofit side, Fred Schott drew plans for that in the mid-'90s, and it would be about $28,000 to have him come back and update those plans. He is still in business, still has the plans, and he serves on the state board that sets the rules for retrofitting historic buildings. So he did not feel that what he had looked at, other than what deterioration had occurred, would change substantially, and his estimate was substantially lower than the million dollars. There is the issue of the mold, obviously, and the fallen plaster. So having a pretty good number for the roof, the next step was to find a path forward of least resistance. Our first effort with the Oversight Board was foreclosure and asking them to spend some money on it. It was obvious from that that they didn't want to spend any money. So after that, the city administrator and I had a phone conversation with Chandra Wallers. I arranged for the conversation, and the discussion was, okay, you have a building which, the cost of repair exceeds the value of the building, the cost of demolition dramatically exceeds the value of the vacant land, so you basically have a building that has no value. What would be the possibility of going in some direction? And Chandra said, well, you know, we have a similar situation in Guadalupe. There's a building that the agency owns that basically has no value. And the Oversight Board there approved the city becoming the owner of the building for basically the proverbial dollar, and that would be a process going forward here, because this building has no value. And that would take the first-trust deed out. However, comma, the next step was a conversation with the Department of Finance, and the gentleman in charge of this name, his name is Steve Zaley. And again, the city administrator and I spoke with him, and he said, well, yes, we would probably look favorably upon that, but we don't have the procedures in place for it, and they were originally to have posted those procedures about three Fridays ago. I did, in planning for this meeting, place calls to them yesterday and today, and at 5:00 this afternoon, I got a call back, and those procedures will be posted next week to do the management plan to move forward. The advantage to that is that for the proverbial dollar, the city would wipe out the redevelopment agency. We hold the second-trust deed, and then for a negotiated amount, the Calverts have agreed to take a lesser amount to save the building, basically. And we could then clear all the title, and the city could become the owner. The next step would be for the nonprofit group that's forming, or another nonprofit group, because it would need to go out for a request, an RFP, to see who's out there that wants to do it, but I would surely rather see a local group, could then take over the building with the roof repair completed, have a watertight building, and then go to work on solving the other issues with the building. One of the advantages that this building has that many other theaters don't have is it has about 3,000 feet of office space, and about 3,000 feet of commercial space on the ground floor, which whoever runs it would be able to lease out. So once the facility is squared away, there would be enough revenue stream from that lease to pay the maintenance of the entire building, the insurance, the utilities, and they would not have to make a bunch of money on the performing arts portion. And that's another thing that would make it successful. I think now, after we get those requirements posted, we would be able to come back to council with a realistic timeline. What he said to me today was that they would not be substantially different from what's incorporated in AB 1484, but what substantially means remains to be seen. But I think we could develop a timeline. With regard to the three downtown parking lots, how that came to pass was that there was $233,000 of redevelopment money put into that Million Five project when it was done, and as a result of that, the title of those properties is in the redevelopment agency's name. And again, to get those out, when we were talking with Chandra Wallers, we said, hey, you know, we have this problem, and she said, well, in Goleada, there was redevelopment agency money paired with city money to purchase parkland, and that Oversight Board had agreed that if the city would reimburse the redevelopment agency for the amount of money that was put in, that the property could then transfer to the city, and hence the idea of this $233,000 from perhaps transit funds to acquire the deed to the three downtown parking lots. One of the things that was talked about previously with regard to the parking issues is that the one downtown parking lot is one block from the theater, and either through shuttle service or just getting people to walk a whole block, that actually serves that area. The people will generally walk two blocks, so one isn't too big a stretch. You know, there is the issue of the number of seats. There is the ability probably to add between 100 and 200 seats. That was documented in previous discussions of the theater, because the orchestra pit was taken out. So there's a little room for seat expansion. And I think that's kind of the stages and steps of where we are. I would really like, before we make a decision, I would like to see what the state puts out in terms of the steps going forward, because then I could have a great deal of comfort with whether or not this is really as viable as it all seems to be. The conversations with Steve Zaley up at the state were very positive, and the conversations with Chandra Waller were very positive, and it seems like all the stars are aligned to make this work, while we've been sitting around for three weeks waiting for the documentation. So, Councilman Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask a further question of the Economic Development Committee. When you were talking about economic viability for this downtown brew pub slash performance center, you say the numbers don't pencil out just as a performance center because of the whatever. When you go and do your calculations of what makes business sense, are you talking specifically about operational cost? Are you including the cost of the property? And if not, where is that coming into your assessment of what makes economic sense?
Steve Pepe again. I was just passing on generalized information we received from discussions with various people who run entertainment centers that do plays, people who run entertainment centers that tend to do more music, and all of them kept telling us basically, or me and others the same, the numbers. Now, we never drilled down and got any further than those generalized discussions, because the numbers they were using, they were telling us, you're not going to find anybody who's going to want to come in and take over a 450, 500-seat operation, because it's not going to, none of the models out there that people are doing this with have are making it work as an entertainment center of either plays, or music, or some combination.
Right, okay, so if I understand correctly, it is really talking about operations and profitable operations?
Or at least breaking even, because many of them are nonprofits.
Breaking even, okay, so let's say breaking-even operations. So if we talk about a zero-sum, zero-gain, okay, it won't pencil out. Therefore, you will never be able to attract private monies, right? Because who in their mind would like to, besides the government, who in their mind would like to invest in something that is basically going to give them no returns? So that was what you learned from some people that you talked to, correct?
Correct. The model we keep hearing is, for nonprofits running it, 40% of it comes from the sale of tickets and things of that nature, and 60% comes from somebody else. And if you know about the Shakespeare stuff up in Portland, Oregon, Ashland, Oregon, they operate on 60/40. The city and the nonprofit put in about $30 million a year on that operation. The reason they do it is because they generate a ton of bed tax, sales tax, and other taxes, so it makes sense to them to do it. But the number we keep hearing back is, ticket sales and all, that'll get you 40%, you've got to come up with the other 60%, and that's why it's done with nonprofits, and they do it because it brings business and tourists into the area who will then spend money on other things, and generate sales tax, and generate bed tax, and to them, it adds up. But they don't, even as successful as the Shakespeare thing is, anybody's been there, they don't break even on their ticket sales. They lose every year.
Mr. Mayor, and just to add to what's been said, remember, all that's being talked about right now is operation of a facility that's already been put into shape to be able to be operated. It's not funding all of that stuff to get it in that shape.
Correct. I'm wondering if, Brian, if you'd like to come and talk...
I still have the floor, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. So if I understand this correctly, from the private point of view of making money and operating a facility that may just even be, let's forget about the cost of fixing it and everything, operating the facility, the Economic Development Committee has heard that it's not viable to keep this as a performance center alone. So there is other ideas that are being kicked around, which is make it commercially viable with a brew pub and some other source of income. So the way I see it, having heard previous testimony from the community, the council needs to decide on really what do they want the Lompoc Theater to be, okay? Do they want the Lompoc Theater to be preserved as a performance center with all, what we've heard what that is, that is unique because of the acoustics, et cetera? Actually, we add seats to it, it will destroy the acoustics, we've heard about that. Or do we make the Lompoc Theater an economic viable building? That's the way I see it. Am I wrong? I mean, it seems to be that philosophically, those are the two options that we have. The expense associated with the two options, at the end of the day, are the same, because we need to fix the building. Whether it's going to end up being an economic, feasible brew pub, whatever, or whether it's going to be the center that is unique in its own acoustics, and that is going to maintain the 450 seats or not, that's a philosophical decision that this council needs to make, I assume.
Mr. Mayor, at the risk of being burned in effigy, there's another option, which is if that entire block was vacant, it would make a very attractive place for redevelopment to happen on a private scale that could be an incredible draw to the downtown area, but that would mean a vacant site.
Now, wasn't that what LH CDC was trying to do?
No.
No.
No?
No.
I mean, wasn't LH CDC trying, bought the property to put a parking spot for the theater, and own other properties to make it economically viable? I mean...
What I meant was, clear the site.
Oh, you mean demolish it? Okay, so now we have a new option, demolish the Lompoc Theater. That hasn't been put in here, I mean, okay? Has anybody discussed that option, which I'd like to ask, Economic Development Committee? From the economic point of view, do you think that you would be able to attract an investor having a vacant lot, as the council says? Perhaps three vacant lots? The parking, you know, the corner, and the Lompoc Theater demolished, and the parking lot. You have three vacant lots. Would that be economically more attractive?
It would provide the person who bought it with a lot more opportunities than you have if you buy the existing building with its current configuration and try and figure out what you're going to do with it. So to that extent, it would be more desirable from the private sector, because they have greater control in what is put onto the property. greater control in what is put onto the property. Whether we can find somebody who wants to do it is another question, but it would be more desirable, if I'm understanding what you're asking.
Thank you.
I think my concern is there are at least five light posts along there, and I don't think I want to be hung from any one of them. Councilmember Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, with the permission of Councilmember Costa, I'd, I'd like to get some public comment before I go any further. You okay with that?
I just have one question for the mayor. Mr. Mayor, in the option that you've discussed, my question is, well, obviously, and I think I know the answer, is where the money would come from. So it'd be $25,000 to pay to the Calvert's, assuming that they would bring it down to that amount, but in discussions, $25,000, plus approximately $220,000 for the switch with the downtown, with the I lot, correct? Plus, the cost to stabilize the theater itself.
The, the funding for the I Street Lot would come, could come from transit funding. And kind of the very bizarre thing about that is that if we get all the way through this process, and we get our property management plan done, the very last carrot for the city is that if we do all these things, they'll pay us what they owe us, so we'll get $110,000 back to the general fund at, at the end of all of this.
Right, because we get that 16%.
Well, no, they owe us, the redevelopment agency of the city of Lompoc owes the city of Lompoc $110,000 that we loaned them years ago. And the carrot at the end of the RDA dissolution process is that the loans that the, that the state said they weren't going to repay, the cities, they will repay us.
But can you use transit funds if we weren't going to have the transit center in that location?
No, you could not.
So then, we would be committing ourselves.
No, I'm sorry, that's not true. You could use transit funds for that if it was going to be parking for the Clean Air Express. You wouldn't necessarily have to have the transit center there, you would have to have it designated as parking for the Clean Air Express, which it is now.
So we would have two options for our property that have been clearly defined by the Economic Development Committee, to be prime location for development, which is that those two parking lots off of I Street. We would basically be boxing ourselves in for what we could utilize those spaces for, if we use transit funds to pay those monies.
Yes, some portion of those spaces would be then, would be dedicated for transit for some period of time.
So that for me, I, I, I don't think that that's a viable option. I think if we're going to go with the option you've discussed.
Then the two can be separated. I mean, there's not, the theater is not necessarily joined to the transit center.
Right, okay. So that's something I want to put out there. But really, what I'm saying is where the money's going to come from. In your mind, the money then, say that, even, even saying that the 220 or so thousand, or $225,000, whatever it is, would come from transit funds, that would still be the cost to stabilize, and additional $25,000 for the Calvert's. Where would that money come from?
There's only one place for it.
General fund reserves.
That would be a general fund, either as a direct expense, or as a loan against the project to be repaid from revenue from the, from the lease of the space. Remember that there's 3,000 feet of commercial space, and there's 3,000 feet of office space that could be leased out.
Right, but in the scenario you just described, those, that income would go to be, towards paying other things, not to repay the loan.
It could, or it could not. I don't think we have, we're not anywhere along with a, with a performer to discuss how those, how that would all work.
But that all, for me, I have to take that into consideration, considering whether or not those monies are going to be paid back. So I, I really, and I want the community to, and I want to hear what you have to say, but we really need to focus on where is the money going to come from? If it's coming from general fund reserves, recognize what potential you are taking away. So for example, Mr. Wilkie, although it's not confirmed, we may be facing another deficit this year. So that's something to consider. Our employees are still on furlough. That's something to consider. And I know, I understand the value of this, I'm just having a really difficult time with taking out what could potentially be $1 million to stabilize this facility from our general fund reserves. So I, I want to hear what the community has to say at this point. Thank you.
Okay, well, I, I gotta tell you, I wouldn't spend $1 million. I'm, my, my neck would go out enough to get the roof watertight, and that's, that's where I'm stopping. That way, it's, it's, the building is not going to deteriorate further, and the community can go to work on it, and then there's not the time pressure to solve the issue.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question regarding.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your light from the computer. Councilman Martner.
It's a question for you, Mr. Mayor. You're saying that it would ta, it would cost approximately $225,000 to stabilize the roof?
No, $155,000.
Okay, $155,000 to stabilize the roof. City attorney, you're saying that it's going to cost $700,000 to stabilize the building? I'd like to get a number from up here at the dais that is the same number, hopefully.
You won't get the same number.
Okay, so that's a big problem, that up here, we have the mayor telling us that it's going to cost $125,000, and we have our legal counsel that is telling us that it's going to cost us probably $700,000. That's a big difference. And I would like that to be clarified before I even make the decision of spending the money. I'm sorry, there is no decision to be made if we have two conflictive numbers that are more than a factor of two.
Okay, let's go to public comment, and I think we want to start with, with Brian, who knows a lot. And, and I, just so everyone understands, I don't think we have the information here this evening to make a decision. I think we just have the information to, to ask some questions and go forward and bring, and gather more information, because it's a really big, yeah, there's a lot involved. Brian?
You think?
Yeah.
Brian Cole, representing the Lompoc Theater Project, and I want to thank council and the mayor as well, too, for, for their input, but also their, their dogged nerve to take this on, because this is no small project at all. And it takes a very concerted effort on everyone's part, and it's not just as easy as etch-a-sketching something away and thinking that you can put something back, like memories that will be permanently erased. I'm just going to read something short, because I know it's running late, and everybody's energy is probably running low, but I'll read this for you, and then entertain any questions if you have any. "It was the best of times, it was the worst of times. It was the age of wisdom, it was the age of foolishness. It was the epoch of belief, it was the epoch of incredulity. It was the season of light, it was the season of darkness. It was the spring of hope, it was the winter of despair. We had everything before us, we had nothing before us. We were all going direct to heaven, we were all going direct the other way. Cities want well-planned, operating historic theaters, which will improve the future of the city. People of the city want a community intelligently balanced between activity, arts, and cultural choices. We live in an odd era where presidential fundraising has topped $2 billion. Yet unemployment and the haves and the have-not economy is still staggering people into foreclosure and massive life changes. Credibility of government is at an all-time low, yet people still want to have hope and a sense of normalcy. During all of this, communities and families are coming together across the nation to create that normalcy. Nonprofits are being formed by ordinary citizens to restore control of the new vision to ordinary people. Philanthropists who have the resources and share the vision are standing ready to contribute to those who demonstrate sincerity, purpose, and focus. The Lompoc Theater Project brings to the table a nonprofit on the cusp of being formed, a varied group of young, mature, creative, and pragmatic people who see beyond the immediate need of fixing the roof of the theater, to re-establishing Lompoc's downtown as a destination for all ages, pedestrian-friendly, and a cornerstone project to revitalize our city's economy. We are developing plans to operate a financially sustainable theater and performing arts center. We are in the process of contacting community groups that might utilize our restored theater, and seeking letters of support, like just received from the Lompoc Valley Arts Council letter. Thank you very much to President Don Adams for hand-delivering. We support the city in developing more proactive options that will give the city the opportunity to take action to prevent additional damage to the theater. And thank you specifically to Mayor Lynn for all his efforts thus far. We are stand, standing ready to partner with the city when the ownership issue is resolved. The potential for film festivals, as in Santa Barbara that draws thousands, music, live theater, dance performances, art exhibitions, youth theater, independent films, music and theater classes for education is definitely there, demonstrating the Calvert Theater as a multifunctional facility. And tourists visiting historic sites typically stay longer and spend more than other tourists. Healthy cities have vibrant downtowns that don't fold up after 5:00 p.m. As a community, are we ready to redefine ourselves other than a bedroom community? As a community, are we ready to learn from and not repeat the mistakes of the past, nor dwell on that past, but move forward to new thinking, new hope, and an attractive, culturally vibrant downtown? I believe the answer is yes. And despite the ironic and personal reality, I too need a roof desperately, and that I am struggling, just like a good many of you are, to make ends meet, to keep my business alive. And despite this, I pledge my commitment to the Lompoc Theater Project and to the city of Lompoc to do my part, to the best of my abilities, to create that new vision, that new life and new era of prosperity. We have everything before us. We've lived through our season of darkness. We are now ready for the spring of hope and the season of light. Thank you."
Thank you. Do we have questions for Brian? Okay, you got away light. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Who would like to speak next?
Carol Benham, Lompoc resident. I am also involved with the Lompoc Theater Project. I was going to talk to you a little bit tonight about the, the array of complicated options you have before you, and they are. I'm going to change what I talk about a, a little bit, and I'm, so I'm only, only speaking for myself here. You know, I'm getting a little trembling in my legs, I'm starting to sense a steamroller. I'm a little concerned about that. The last, I, I sense a pivot here. We, when we last talked about this building, the possibilities for this building and the work to be done, I, we talked in terms of a partnership. Tonight, I want to thank, well, first, I want to thank Councilwoman Martner for asking some very good questions, because now we're learning there actually is an option eight, which is to level the building, and, level the building and present a really nice square block for some developer, whoever, and, and there will be some individuals that that will benefit financially, if that's the case. Mr. Lingle, you talked about the other properties that LH CDC had at the time, and, and you mentioned H and Ocean Lot. As you know, that was not going to be a parking lot, that was going to be a retail commercial center. The primary parking lot for that theater, as I understood it, was actually going to be across the street at one of the other seven downtown lots LH CDC purchased. So I think that to say, gee, that's a tiny parking lot, we can't restore the theater is, is perhaps a bit short-sighted, because there's only one parking lot now, doesn't mean we can't envision a restored performing arts center that this community supports and have parking along with it. I would, would also like to share with you that our generalized information based upon conversations with people is that the theater is a performing arts center with film, music, dance, ballet, guest speakers, is definitely financially feasible. And we are, as a group, and have been, collecting a lot of work directly from the restored theaters. Just so you know, that we also have some anecdotal information to share with you. You have a complicated, they are, a complicated set of options before you. Don't give up on restoring this building now. It's, we're, we're not at the point where we should give up on turning this over to a community to restore. It is doable. At least, give us the chance to bring you the numbers before you start talking about raising the building. Thank you.
Thank you. And who would like to speak next?
I'm a local resident, I'm also part of the Lompoc Theater Project. I feel really strongly about this, because all the talk that I have heard is building the down, revitalizing the downtown around this venue, and something to bring people downtown, keep them here after 5:00, and something for everybody, for everybody in the town. The children, old people like me, and everybody in between, every nationality, all different kinds of things that we can do there. And it is viable, as, as Carol said, we spent a lot of time on this. As far as the micro brewery pub, I've, I'd heard inklings about this. I thought it had kind of dropped. Seems to me that somebody has a hidden agenda here, and it's been worked at somewhat. Nevertheless, I'm not a wine drinker, Mr. Pepe, but I am a beer drinker. And the micro brewery pub sounds really fun to me, but the town's not going to build up around beer. The kids, families. A brew pub would be great fun in one of these other buildings, and I think it'd do really well. And in addition to bringing people to town and having something to do besides drink wine. At any rate, I strongly believe that, that this particular building belongs to everybody in this town, not a special interest group, certainly not torn down. And as Carol said, we need time, we don't need to rush into this, and it's been sitting there for a while. And make sure we, we make the right choice and have the right opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you do? My name's Steve Storm, and I'm a resident of Lompoc, and I'm also involved with the Lompoc Theater Project. I don't have a whole lot to say. Just a quick couple of things when, you know, for you to consider when you're making your decision. One, it sounds like it would cost more to demolish the building than it would to fix the roof. And two, it sounds like, I mean, from the way that the lot at H and Ocean, which is also a nice big lot, has stayed vacant for so long, even if we leveled, you know, the Lompoc Theater, I don't think that there's any reasonable evidence to assume that, you know, some nice developer would come and snatch it up. And even assuming there was, B, I don't see, it wouldn't necessarily be what the community would want, what the community would need, what would be in the community's best interests. I think if you are dealing with a community group and somebody you want to make a partnership with, then that's something that the community can have, you know, that the city can have some greater influence and communication with. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Bob Holloway, and I'm also on the Lompoc Theater Project. Everybody's saying that the building's all rundown and all this. You know, the building is not that bad. You know, I've been in construction business all my life, and I've been inside the building in the last three weeks, and, you know, it needs a new roof. You know, everybody's making a big deal about it's fallen down and everything. Well, you know, if you've got 14-inch walls, solid concrete with rebar in them, it's going to cost $500,000 to tear that place down, and maybe even more than that, you know? So, you know, with the community, we, we've already started working with the community, and we, we have some people that are stepping forward. And, you know, I, I don't want people to give up. You know, Lompoc has torn down all the good old buildings in town, you know? Where Williams Brothers Market was, right here, where the new grocery store's going in, there was a wonderful house on the corner, had a carriage house and everything. What'd they do? Went in there with a bulldozer, and bulldozed it down. You know, there's three or four houses like that in Lompoc that they did. It seems like that everybody that comes to Lompoc wants to tear everything down instead of keeping there something. You know, we have to keep the old town, you know, the old town is way different from when I was a kid. I was a kid, you know. But we need to keep the theater going, and, you know, people have a lot of memories, you know, what happened in that theater when they were kids. And I just want you all to know that. And I think that, you know, with the people that we got on our committee, we have a lot of different people, you know. I'm the oldest guy on there, I think. But we have a lot of young people, and they have a lot of really good ideas. And I think that it's a whole different group of people that are on this committee than are on every other committee in Lompoc. You know, I've been on a lot of committees, and it's always the same people. Well, this committee, we have a totally different group. And so when you start thinking about how you're gonna vote, well, you know, I think that we need to do the theater, and I know darn well that it's gonna be put back together.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Good evening again. My name is Yedidia De Vries, and I'm also involved with the Lompoc Theater Project. It was raised here tonight that the unnumbered option is to do nothing. And that's true. You do have that option. Because the only reason that this is before, that this item is before you tonight is because people in the community care passionately about this theater. You have no financial liability, and it's not that, you know, you're obligated to take action. It's because the community stepped forward and cares passionately about seeing this theater be a theater and be center for the community. So while I appreciate what the Economic Development Committee brought forward, and I understand the need to be economically viable, this is about more than just having an economically viable building. The reason the community cares passionately is both because of the history, right, the past, and also what this could mean for the future in terms of building a community and being a center, not just for economically vibrant old town, but a socially vibrant old town where the community comes together. And so this is before you because there are three things that need to happen in order to see that vision. First, we have to extricate ourselves from the issue of who owns the building right now. Second, we need to rehabilitate the building so it doesn't, fix the roof, take care of the mold. And third is the operations. Right now, that first step is what we really need the council's help. The community has stepped forward many times and, you know, wanted and is already working on the other two, but we can't because we're stymied by that first step. That's what we need your help with. That's what we need the best solution for. And then we can figure out what type of partnership, public, private, what works best for those other two. But I would urge the council not to get hung up in trying to, you know, solve those second two steps and try to work without, when it's that first step, that's the reason it's here before you. If that didn't exist, we wouldn't be here. We would've already taken care of everything on our own. But it's because of that first step that we need your help and that, right, and that this item is before you at all and why we're all here. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have to say your name. My name is Ken Calvert. The Lompoc Theater Project is where, why I'm here. My father and mother's name is Earl and Ann Calvert, and this might not have anything to do with the situation right now, but their, their names should be put in stone forever on the historic Lompoc Theater for future generations to remember. History will bring the community together and do not let anything destroy it, no matter what. Great performances will be scheduled there with dynamic acoustics no other theater has. Great performances that will be scheduled with, yeah, the community and the city council should realize this and move on tonight and vote this through without hesitation. Your selection, whatever you decide, is so critical. So make Lompoc the place for culture and bring back the downtown for a community to enjoy and feel proud in what you have done. The numbers don't add up, but the historic value does. The community will benefit from the theater. Don't forget the city was a little negligent in the timeframe and where all the money went to. So don't get half-cocked and blow this off due to the lack of money. The community will be there to pick it up. You gotta think positive of this situation because it is perplexed. They will come up with finances. One idea is you could put it on the electrical bill. I'm sure our family would donate $5. You know, that's not a big amount, but save the history. It's worth a fortune. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close our communication and come back to the council and take a break. Five minutes. Okay, and if we come back to order, please. From my standpoint with regard to this, I would really like to see two things. Number one, I'd like to see what the state puts out next week so that we can better chart a path forward. And to Councilmember Martner's point, I can bring in some written estimates on some of the various components. And then I think, speaking with Brian and the group during the break, they would be able to come back to us with kind of a preliminary business plan to verify that they can carry it forward. And I would, I would propose that we continue this item to the first meeting in December, which would give everybody time to get all the ducks in a row, and I think we would have a better, better decision having all the information rather than tonight where we're, I think we got a good idea of the pieces that we're missing. So, Councilmember Martner?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have a clarification regarding the fixing of the roof of the Lompoc Theater. And I really would like to get a solid number and a proposal, because right now we are diverging for, on the order of, I don't know, $500,000 or so forth. So whatever that takes, I think it's meaningless to have another discussion if we don't really have some numbers where the city can agree with, too, that is, the staff and the mayor.
What I'll do is I'll get individual estimates from the contractors that I spoke with, and I'll bring those in for the staff.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask? A suggestion I would have is for the Building Division and the Engineering Division staff to find a consultant who will come in and give a, their best professional opinion on what it will take and what it will cost to make the roof watertight, as well as do the minimum amount of molding repair and seismic, if that's also something that they determine is necessary, to avoid any concern that anyone would have, council or otherwise, with the information that we have as being as accurate as it can be. And that may cause, to get that proposal or that information may cost something, but I think it would be money well spent by the city to get that information from that kind of a consultant rather than trying to do it the way that we've been doing it.
Maybe a less expensive way would be to do an RFP for the roof replacement, because we have the specifications in the retrofit plan provided by Fred Schott that could be utilized. And get a number that way, you know, see who's out there in the world and would give us a proposal. That wouldn't cost us anything, and we could get some set and cement numbers from people.
I would think that you would want your Building Department and Engineering Department to, or hire a structural engineer, and if you don't want it to be your Building Department or your Engineering Department, to hire someone who just focus on this building today as to what they think professionally needs to be done, and then, and then get an RFP and get proposals on that. That's, I think that may be a more certain way of getting the information that you need.
Okay, previously, I distributed to the council a letter from Fred Schott. In that letter, he indicated for $8,000, he would come in and do a review of the, any additional damage since his last report, and give us comments with regard to the condition of the building. And I think it was $28,000 was an update of the earthquake retrofit, a review of the structure, and then provide a new set of prints to, to go forward with, with construction bidding. So there's, there's two options. $8,000 would kind of update his prior review, and $28,000 would update all the plans to current, for the current retrofit. I personally would just prefer to find out what it would cost to get a roof put on and get that done and go forward, and I think we could do that with Fred for the eight grand, but we would certainly need to have staff talk with him about that.
Councilmember Martner?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of confused. I mean, why do we have a Building Department then? You know, it, why do we have a Building Department? I mean, I'm confused. I mean, here's the city. We represent the city, and the city's looking to, for a potential repair on this building. Even to send an RFP on a building that we don't own is a little difficult. Now, I, you know, I don't understand why do we have such a, why, over $500,000 difference between what the city staff is estimating and what the mayor is estimating? That's, that's a huge gap, and that gap needs to be understood. What is the difference? Is the city staff doing it so wrong? And if they're doing it so wrong, I think they need to get fired. I'm sorry, I'll be very honest about it. Now, if the mayor knows some other way to do it cheaper, and the city staff does not know that path, then perhaps we need to really look at this organization, don't you think, Mr. Mayor?
No, Councilmember Martner, in answer to your question, there are three different estimates that have been put together for this building over time. Number one was an estimate by a structural engineer who reviewed the facility many years ago. And then you'll recall that this council commissioned a review to determine what the water damage had been, and that was, I think, described as a wag, a wild-ass guess, and that's where that number came from. And then when Mr. Calvert brought the prints in for the building, I realized that Fred Schott was the one who had drawn the prints, and I know Fred personally, he actually came down and volunteered his services on another building in town and helped a nonprofit. And I called Fred and I asked him what his recollections were, and they were very clear on the building. And from him, I learned that he serves on the State Commission that writes the standards for retrofitting historic buildings, so he's, he's surely the expert of experts. And then I said to him, I want you to give me your best high estimate excluding the roof, because I had acquired those estimates for the roof from various contractors, of what the earthquake retrofit would be. And his comment then was that his best high estimate of the retrofit would be about $500,000. And I provided that letter to the council, and that he would, for the sum of $28,000, review the substantive water damage that occurred since his last review of the building and upgrade the earthquake retrofit drawings, which we are in possession of a copy of, to meet current code. However, he felt that there wasn't a tremendous amount to be done because with regard to historic building, the code hadn't changed a great deal, and the retrofit design hadn't changed. There were some issues with some footings in the, in the front window openings, but, you know, those were the, the numbers going forward. I would be happy to return with a whole packet of documents at a future meeting and supply all of this information, and then we could probably make a little better decision. And also, we would have the information from the state on the path forward if, in fact, that proves to be a realistic path forward, which I believe it will be.
I would like to ask for a very specific question without the details about retrofitting this. How much is it gonna cost to fix the roof?
$154,000.
Okay, the mayor says $154,000. I would like to ask the city staff how much it's gonna cost to fix the roof.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I feel confident that if we take all of the data that has been gathered and ask the engineering and building departments to come back with a report, to take all of this data and come back and explain it in a way that with the best course of action to give you a number you feel comfortable with as a group, we can do that.
I am asking right now how much it's gonna cost to fix the roof for the city staff. I would like to ask that question. Do we have that answer right now?
Right now, we have the information the mayor has shared, and then we have the range of what a consultant had also shared with staff as.
And what is the range that the consultant, this is another consultant that says how much would it cost to fix the roof? Could I get that number?
The structural engineer that worked on the theater project went back out and did an assessment and showed us the photos, council, of all the water damage. That was a couple million dollars to restore it to its.
I am asking for fixing the roof only. I don't want to get into the mold and this, fixing the roof only. Can I get a number for that?
And that is the number that the mayor.
So the city staff does not have a number? Okay, I would like to ask the city staff that at the next council meeting, they give us an official number from the city, please, specifically the cost of the roof repairs. I'm asking the city staff.
Councilmember Martner, I hope I, I'm willing to be corrected. I don't believe that your staff has the wherewithal to be able to make that, give that kind of an estimate, because I don't think you have a structural engineer who'd be able to assist with that. And I may be wrong, and I don't know who may be able to tell me I'm wrong, but I think that's the situation. You don't have someone on staff that can give you those numbers.
Okay, so can the staff make a few phone calls like the mayor did and ask some contractors how much it would cost to fix the roof?
My strong recommendation is we not do it that way. My strong recommendation is that we have something more definitive than a phone call and a visit, and I think we need something more precise than that.
Thank you for your input. What does the rest of the council want to think? Do we need something more precise, or do we just need a phone call?
I'm, I agree with you that it would be nice to have the staff look at all the information that we have at hand and then bring back to us their thoughts on it. Councilmember Lingel?
Well, our Economic Development Director made that recommendation a few minutes ago that she would get the information, bring it back to us, and I think exactly what we need to do. Right now, we're just playing a game of ping pong right now, battling back and forth. We have, we don't have the information. We've been spending the last half an hour discussing this without the information, so let's bring it back, get some solid, or at least as concrete as we can so we can make a decision. Right now, we're not, we're not doing anything. So yes, get some solid information, bring it back to us, and let us try to make a decision next time we come back. But right now, we're not getting any place.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, also to reiterate what Mr. Panoni shared, if for that concrete information, a consultant may be needed to analyze the work and give us a more concrete estimate. Is that, would that be something you would also improve?
Yeah, I think we need an estimate on how much you'd like us to preauthorize for that. You have any idea?
Well, I bet if you bring that back as part of your report, because I don't think we know it this morning.
Okay, so the first meeting in December, because next meeting is very full. Everybody good with that? Councilmember Costa? Councilmember Lingel? Councilmember Martner? Okay, so we're set for the first meeting in December. Thank you. And now we'll move on to item number nine. And Teresa.
on to item number nine. And Teresa, you're presenting on this one?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry for interrupting. The first meeting in December is the meeting when you typically swear in the new council. Do you want this brought before the new, the old council, before the people are brought, or do you want it to be brought in with the new council?
I think since it's an expense, it would be something the new council would decide.
And if, and if that's true, do you want to do it that night or do it the next meeting?
No, I'd like to do it that night because of the ongoing issue with the roof. Councilmember Martner's the only one that's affected, and she's happy to have the new council take it on. Okay, next. We will all know later tonight, much later.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Teresa Galavan, Economic Development Director. This evening, we're presenting options for funding at the Marx House and Hope House. And on July 17th, the council approved CDBG funding for various projects and asked staff to take a look at whether the Marx House, Walnut House, and Caretaker House, and relocation of tenants from Hope House would be eligible for home funding. Following that council meeting, staff took a look at the regulations and our initial review. It looked like those projects would not be eligible for home funding because the primary use of home funds is to expand low-income housing. And those units at the Marx House were already counted into our inventory. So it did not look like it was an expansion of the inventory, which is part of the home funding requirement. This was discussed with Good Sam, and then they shared with us that their status as a CHODO might enable use of home funds for the rehabilitation projects. In response to inquiries from staff, HUD advised us that the city would need to issue a notice of funding availability, a NOFA, for the use of its home funds, prior to awarding any funds to a project. That was also shared with Good Samaritan. Subsequently, the city and others became aware that the HUD audit of the Santa Barbara County Housing and Community Development Department has led to a hold on the dispersment of home funds through the county until the findings of the audit are resolved. So the city is part of the county consortium, and the hold on the county means that the city cannot access its allocation of home funds until HUD allows the county to resume distributing those funds. So as we understand also, one of the issues that was raised in that audit had to do with Good Sam's designation as a CHODO. We understand that also has been resolved, and HUD has confirmed Good Samaritan's CHODO status. So that's a little bit of the background since our meeting in July. Now, to the projects that are before you this evening, that you asked us to take a look at, we have at the Marx House Shelter, three projects considered for funding, the rehabilitation of the Walnut House, further work on the Marx House, and rehabilitation work on the Caretaker House. Good Samaritan has prioritized those projects for us, the Walnut House being the first priority, the main house being the second priority, and the Caretaker House being the third priority. And they have also let us know that the Hope House is no longer to be considered for funding because of the timing. They need to move on that in, in a way that does not accommodate the funding processes we have before us. So this evening, we have three different options for funding. The very first one is we have $70,679 in CDBG program income that is available. This was allocated to the Dick DeWes community and senior center, and was not expended on the project and can be reallocated to other eligible projects. A budget adjustment would need to be done to approve moving the funds from the existing project to a new project. All three of the projects under consideration in this report would qualify as an eligible project for this funding. The second funding option is home state home program income. But let's go through the background and the findings that we have on that, because that funding really is not available immediately. Through the county home consortium, funding allocation, there's $113,207. However, that is unavailable right now due to the freeze from the audit on the county and those findings. Next, we have our state home program income that is available. That's $99,627. Another finding, our third finding, has to do with an informational item. Marx House received home funding on October 27, 1997. Home program, home program rules on double dipping indicate that no additional home funds may be provided to a home assisted project during the relevant period of affordability, which is per home 15 years. Now that the 15-year period just passed on October 27th, this rule no longer applies, but I wanted to just share that with you as a finding and background information. Our fourth finding and background, again, as mentioned, the HUD audit has led to the freeze on the distribution of home funds. So the county convened a conference call with members of the Santa Barbara County Home Consortium, Urban County Partnership, on October 29. During that call, the county shared with us that they continue to work with HUD on resolution of the audit findings. The county anticipates it will have all responses and materials to HUD by the end of February 2013. So the county is not sure how many findings need to be resolved in order to lift the freeze on the funding. Therefore, it may be at least four more months before funding is available, potentially longer. During this time, jurisdictions cannot enter into any home funding reservations or commitments. Next item is the notice of funding availability. As I mentioned, HUD has indicated that the city of Lompoc should issue a NOFA, a competitive process to determine, to determine projects that it will fund. Since there is no county consortium home funding available now, city staff recommends issuing the NOFA after the funds are actually available, and including state home program income funds in that process. The eligibility of projects, the next item here. As I mentioned, the primary goal of home funds is to increase or expand the inventory of low-income housing. And after the initial review, it did not seem to expand that inventory. However, after further discussions with HUD, it, it seems as though more research is warranted to confirm whether the Walnut House or the Caretaker House may actually expand the number of units that were originally identified. And also, it would be worthwhile to do more research on any prior funding that may limit or preclude the Marx House from receiving additional home funds. Next item is the community housing development organization status. As was mentioned, Good Samaritan shared with us that that might enable them for, to do other things. And I'd like to point out that a minimum of 15% of home allocations must be set aside for specific activities to be undertaken by a CHODO. So 15% of our home funds should be used, set aside for a CHODO. A CHODO is a private nonprofit, community-based organization that has obtained or intends to obtain staff with the capacity to develop affordable housing for the community it serves, and it must meet certain requirements pertaining to their legal status, organizational structure, capacity experience, as HUD determines. And there are benefits to being a CHODO. There are certain, there's the set-aside money that they would receive. And then there are other uses of funds for operating expenses or pre-development costs that are available to CHODOs that are not available to, to other operators. So selecting a CHODO is a process that, that is outlined here, that should be considered. And that brings us also to another aspect of working with a CHODO on projects like this, and that is the ownership of property. CHODO set-aside funds may be used by CHODOs for home activities where the CHODO acts as the developer, the sponsor, or the owner of the housing. Good Samaritan Shelter Services has expressed interest in becoming the owner of the Marx House if appropriate terms were identified. And those could perhaps include an allocation of the CHODO set-aside funds from the city. Based on the council's previous direction to issue a request for proposals for a permanent service provider at Marx House, staff would not recommend the transfer of ownership without issuing a request for proposals for acquisition and operation of the shelter. So the third and final, that kind of wraps up some of the findings and points I wanted to bring to your attention in regard to the home funding. The final funding option is to reallocate funds from previously allocated capital improvement projects. And if the council wanted to go down that path, a substantial plan amendment may be required if the change affects 50% or more of the project's funding, or changes significantly from one use to another. So if council would like to reallocate funds from previously allocated projects, staff would work with the county to determine the appropriate process and report back. So the fiscal impact represented here, none of the funds that we're talking about are general fund resources. Of the funding options mentioned, only the CDBG program income is immediately available. So in conclusion, the CDBG program income is readily available, and the proposed projects are eligible for those funds. Allocation of those funds to the top two priority projects would have a positive impact on the operations of the shelter. Directing staff to identify potential CHODOs, consider ownership options on the Marx House Shelter, further research on the use of the home funds at the shelter, and monitor the estimated date of release of the home funds from the county so we could anticipate when we should do a NOFA, would help further the city's abilities to address the community needs. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions at this time? Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. When I tallied the numbers, it looks like Good Samaritan requested $105,000 of CDBG, CDBG funding. Is that correct? That would be the $46,000, $21,000, and $38,000.
Okay.
Is that correct? It looks like that's the total, real fast. So it looks like option one presented here, CDBG program income, is only $70,679. So if we, if council decides to use those funds that are available, that still leaves us $34,321 under the amount that was requested by Good Samaritan. So then that takes me to the reallocation of funds. Because that is such a small percentage of the total amount of funds that we ended up allocating already, it's, it's less than 50%. Do you still believe the process would be a difficult one, or do you think that's something that we could do relatively easily?
The process of reallocating funds?
Correct.
It depends on what project you're taking it from and moving it to. And then I need to let the county know, and I could report back to you on what that process would be. So.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd invite someone from Good Samaritan to come and chat with us about this, or all of you if you want to come on down.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much for allowing us to be here. I'm Tom Jenkins, the president of Good Samaritan Shelter. We are generally in support of the recommendations of your staff, though we may have some factual comments about some of the, some of the points. But we'd just like to move on forward at this, at this stage. We do have a concern, though. We do know that city staff, or at least someone has sent the fire department out to look at Walnut House with the intent of burning it down. And we would recommend that you not take any action on Walnut House toward eliminating it for a couple of different reasons. It may provide opportunities for whichever CHODO takes over the property to either, you know, change the buckets we fill, depending on where the funds come from. But nonetheless, it at least allows the different nonprofits, as they look at the property, the opportunity to look at what is best for the property and how they can make it most viable, rather than getting rid of one of the proper, one of the buildings that are on the property, which may, may make it less financially viable from either our point of view or some other program's point of view. So we just hope that you would just leave that, those options open in the future, rather than taking action, which would be terminal at this stage. But other than that, we do, we feel that the actions recommended by the board are by your staff, and the priority that we've provided them is in the best interest of the property, the services that we provide, and the services that whatever nonprofit may get those property may provide in the future.
Actually, we, we got that information for you guys at your request.
Yes, the, the priority, yes.
No, no, with regard to the possibility of disposing of the house as an option, that came out of a conversation I had with, with your financial guy, mental block, Santa Maria City Council. It was just, just a piece of information to put in your book as an alternative. Not, it wasn't any decision on our part. It was purely, purely supplied information.
That, that is not the information he gave to us, so.
Okay. Well, maybe there was a misunderstanding in the conversation, but obviously it resides with you guys, not with us.
Yeah.
Councilmember Martner?
Yes, I, I am very curious to, to try to understand this misunderstanding. You mean, the city of Lompoc sent the fire department out there?
Fire department showed up at the property, kind of unannounced, and was walking around looking to see the opportunity to.
I would like to ask the question to the city administrator. City administrator, how, how did that come about? I mean, do we just send fire departments out and ask them to burn things down and?
I think I can address that.
No, I'm asking the city administrator.
Well, I'm the one that generated it, so I think I can answer it.
Oh, I see. So the mayor sends the fire department out to a private property.
No, that's not, let me know when you're done, and I'll tell you the story.
I would like to ask the question again of the city staff. I assume there is some level of organization in this organization, and somebody makes decisions to send employees out. And I would like to ask the city administrator, who makes those decisions?
Okay, so let me answer, and then she can answer. I asked the city administrator to speak to the fire department, to look at the house and see if it would be a suitable facility for a training exercise, if Good Samaritan decided to go in a different direction, based on a conversation I had with their staff. City administrator?
As explained, yes, the fire chief was asked by me to go and assess ability for that purpose.
So I'd like to ask the city administrator, if I were to ask you a question like that, would you do that? If I were to ask you, would you please go to X property and send the fire department to do this? I would like to ask you that question. If I were to ask, as a council member, say, would you please, fire department would go to X property in Lompoc and send the fire chief to see if that would be a suitable training ground? Would you honor the request that I made?
I'd have to say, yeah, I'd consider it. It was at a request of the gentleman that the mayor talked with.
So who was the gentleman? I think that was the finance, your CFO. Could we get some confirmation that your CFO actually asked the city of Lompoc to find out how much it would cost, or whether the city of Lompoc would like to burn this building down for practice?
So my understanding of the conversation, which I was not there on, is that, is that the mayor did have a conversation with Jack Boyson, who is our chief financial officer, about, you know, options if there's funding, you know, what, what the options would be. My understanding is that he did ask, you know, mention the concept of possibly demoing and moving forward. Mr. Boyson expressed to me that it was a complete shock to us that the fire department was there. No one notified Good Samaritan. The entire fire department's outside. All the clients are outside. They don't know what's going on. My staff is worried because she thinks that there's going to be some kind of exercise that we don't know about. And it's just concerning of how, how it went down. I, my, my understanding is, is that, well, what my hope is, is that we would have some clear communication, because it is, it is, it is a city property. But if we could be notified, hey, the fire department's coming out, they're just going to do a check, that would be helpful, rather than, you know, kind of having the surprise of the fire department out there. It's, it's, it's just, it was a surprise to us, is all. But I, I had heard about the concept of maybe demoing it. I think it had happened in a conversation. And then, but we were not notified about the fire department coming out, or the, or there being a, an exercise of a fire drill of any kind.
Thank you. On that note, I would like to ask the city administrator that if there is a decision. On that note, I would like to ask the city administrator that if there is a decision made of that sort, please notify the people that are being affected beforehand, before they go. I think that would be not only polite, but it would be customer satisfaction. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? I have one, don't go away. So, with regard to the $70,679 that's readily available, would that get you guys going down the road on your two projects?
That should complete the two. And of course, that's work being done on your facility, on our direction essentially as your operator. But yeah, that would do the predominant amount of work that needs to be done. Of the one, of the third project, Caretaker House, that's one that could be delayed indefinitely until we have a better decision, either what the city wants to do or if we end up with the property, what we want to do. We don't think that's critical right now.
I'd like to add one thing, is that I want for the record to understand that the reason that the Walnut House is so important for Good Samaritan to be able to get that up and running is because our goal is to be able to have a low-income family be able to live there and generate income to help Good Samaritan with the operating expenses of Marx House because this city owns that property, they put up an RFP for that project, and the operations, and they're only funding $25,000 of a $90,000 budget right now. So, we're, you're not covering a third of it, and we are scrambling to raise the rest of the funds. So, my, I want for the record is that the reason we want this to happen is so that we can generate income to help us offset that budget, which is completely severely underfunded right now.
Thank you. And I think part of the reason that you're underfunded is the HUD McKinney money that is not currently available.
Well, and the HUD McKinney funding is not available because whoever requested the transfer of funds between the city and the county, I know that the city staff person is now the county staff person, that did not happen with the existing representative over there. And had that transfer happened, it would not affect the change in the CDBG status for the city. It does affect the state funding for this, for emergency solutions grant funding, but the HUD McKinney funding was lost, and that is a huge hit. But that was lost because there was not a transfer that had been submitted mostly on the part of the county.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Okay, is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing no one rise, we'll come back to council for consideration. From my standpoint, I'd like to authorize the staff recommendation, specifically the $70,679, so they can move forward with their projects. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I think it's interesting. I think, you know, I think that we got lucky that this money wasn't already spent. And I'm still a little dissatisfied with the way things had gone till this point. I do understand that it covers the two projects, and I'm glad you brought up that this is still a city-owned facility, so we're just investing in something that we own. So, that said, I do think we should actually allocate the entire amount for those first two projects, and just as the city would, there can be a certain percentage for contingency. And, you know, we need to readdress that third project if those funds don't become available. I don't know, or do we know what the timeline is approximately right now for that?
February.
February? But there's no confirmation of that.
The county has indicated they have, it is in their timeline to get all the documentation and information that HUD has requested to HUD by the end of February. So, HUD will have everything it needs in response to the audit from the county by the end of February. Also, there's another funding cycle that is coming up.
Right. And because that's coming up, and I feel like the time it would actually take for us to reallocate the funds would probably end up being just as long, and I think we actually, I was looking into some things, we might have to put out an RFP again. We could reallocate, but for me, it would make sense to actually make it a competitive process again. So, it would seem as though funding these two projects for now is going to be the best course of action and keeping that third for if those funds become available or for the next cycle. So, I think that's where I stand right now. Thank you.
You want to go ahead and make a motion? I don't see anybody's lights on. So, you want to move the staff recommendation or recommendations? Okay. I'm happy to move it. I move the staff recommendations, 1 through 6, in a second. I'm sorry? Sure. Reallocation of $70,679 in CDBG Program Income Fund 43 from the Dick Deweese Community and Senior Center project to the top two priority project identified in this report, Walnut House and Marx House Rehabilitation. And note that those were unspent funds. Number 2, approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $70,679 from 43321-71081, new community center, to 43353-59209 Marx House renovations. Number 3, proceed with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD outlined steps to select a community housing development organization, organizations, CHODOs, and report back to the council prior to the end of the fiscal year with findings and recommendations. Number 4, consider how ownership of the Marx House shelter by the CHODO may be structured in a sustainable fashion and report back to the council before the end of the fiscal year with findings. Number 5, work with HUD and research further and for, further the eligibility of the Marx House shelter for Home Investment Partnership Act home funding options that may include additional options available to a CHODO. And, number 6, monitor the progress of the county response to the HUD audit and provide the city administrator with updates on the estimated timeframe for release of the home funds so that the city may anticipate when to release a Notice of Funding Availability, a NOFA, for the use of the home and state home program income funds. And a second.
Mary Lynn, although I think that this is the right thing to do, I do have a question for staff. My apologies.
Just as long as I don't have to read it again.
When we were allocating the funding to the community center, was that done on a My question is that we happen to find this leftover money, and we're using our complete and ultimate discretion to take into consideration nobody else that's requested funding except for Good Samaritan, and we're giving them the money. Does that make sense? Although I think it's the right thing to do. Well, technically, we're investing it in our own property, I understand that. But however, there could be other entities vying for this funds that we did not consider on a competitive process. I hate, I know, I hate to throw a wrench in things, but I, I'm thinking about this now for just a quick second. So, if you could just discuss that with me for a moment.
Let me ask the question. When we did the competitive process for the CDBG funds, was there anyone besides Good Samaritan that submitted? Because I think that's probably the question. When we made the other allocations, does anyone remember? My recollection is that there was not.
I, okay, the question of did we, what we did with the community center, I'm not certain on the Dick Deweese, the history of the community center, how that funding process went. But to answer the mayor's question, I think that during the competitive process where we allocated funding in April and July, we did a two-part budget. I think they were all funded. I could go grab my report. All but these, all of them but these.
Everything was funded except these in that process?
Well, to a certain extent, yes. But this is a different pot of money. The $70,000 is different monies than those monies.
Well, it's CDBG program income, and what we allocated in that two-part process was entitlement funding and program income funding. So, it was Fund 44 and Fund 43.
But it was not listed as funds available to be applied for?
At the time, the $71,000, the $70,000 was not part of that pot. That is correct.
But there was money available that someone could have applied for.
That's a good question. So, was the, at that point, why didn't we include that program income in the larger pot of program income at that time? Is it because the project was not complete?
Correct.
So, this is just funds that, right, we were saving to be expended if they needed on the senior center?
Correct.
They were part of the project.
It was part of the Dick Deweese Senior Center project, and that there are still things that are being, right, we were making sure that everything was completed. It was not complete at the time, so it wasn't counted in. But we did not do the competitive process, no, I'm sorry, so it was not counted into that pot of money. However, it is program income, and it is going to a city project, so you don't, it's not part of the entitlement funds through the consortium.
So, I want to confirm that there is no official process that we would have to go through with that funds. We have the discretion to reallocate those monies?
Correct.
Okay. So, I just want to make that clear, that we consider that, that in reallocating the funds, we're not giving all of their nonprofits a chance to compete, not saying that there would be anybody, or that we shouldn't give the money, but we need to consider how that may affect. I mean, do you, I mean, it...
I understand.
But that's the question, so I would hate if you labor it.
I understand the question. I think that, from my standpoint, the fact that it was an open process and Good Samaritan was the applicant, and there were no other applicants regardless of the amount of money, because we didn't have enough money to fund everything back then, you know, this, and we all understood at that time that we were, we had another path for Good Samaritan that didn't prove to work out, and now we have this funding that we didn't, was not available at that time that would help with what we wanted to do originally, which was fund some of Good Samaritan's. So, by a circular route, we got back to do what we wanted to do, and we are repairing our own buildings, so I think that's, that's an important point. But if you don't want a second, I think I can, I think Councilmember Lingle is prepared to.
Councilmember Costa, would you feel more comfortable if I seconded? I would like to second the mayor's motion.
Well, no. If you have a couple, if you have another question or two, let's talk about it and go forward.
Councilmember Costa, maybe this explanation may add some calm to what I'm hearing is your concern. Had this money been available, when Good Sam had asked for this money back then, when we said we didn't have enough, we would have given it to them, or we would have, or the direction would have been clearer from the council, saying, if you don't get this money that you're looking for, the money they weren't able to get, we have this pot we'll give you. So, all we did is we're accomplishing what could have been done through that other competitive process.
Again, not to be labor, I don't want to disagree with you, but if we knew this money was available, at that time, the information we were given was that they could use other monies outside of the program income. So, we could have actually just allocated that money to other projects that asked for the money because we didn't fully fund all those projects. And then we'd be in the same situation that we're in now minus the $70,679.
However, if you had done that, you wouldn't have had the money now to be able to give to them.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Right. So, that's why I'm saying, I do want to say that I appreciate staff's diligence in providing the staff report and finding those monies. I don't want to, you know, I think we did get lucky, but I do want to give you the credit for having done that. But I think we need to be very careful that we are now moving monies around without having that competitive process all in one, at one time. So, let's just be aware of that. But the money's needed. I would have originally allocated the funds in the first place, and I think I made that clear at that public meeting. So, for those reasons, I will be voting yes on the motion. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes for 0 with 1 absent. And do we have any written communications? Nope. And oral communications, last 2 minutes? Anybody want to have 2 minutes with us? Seeing no one rise, we'll close that. Council requests comments and meeting reports.
I have nothing to report.
I'd report that I went to a bunch of meetings, none of them were at city expense, and the meeting schedule seems to be a little slower as we draw closer to the holidays. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I just want to remind everybody that the lung cancer vigil is this Thursday evening at the Elks Lodge, starting at 6:00 p.m. It should be a fantastic event to support getting out information about lung cancer. Marian Rios discussed that today. So, again, that's Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Nothing to report.
Yes, at the Elks. And I didn't know the time, so thank you. Okay, that would be everything. We will be adjourned to the Lompoc City Council, adjourned to a regular meeting at 7:00 p.m. on November 20th, 2012. Thank you for joining us.